Are we ready? Great. Good morning, everybody. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or to the staff. So, let's see. Do we have any, any members of the public who wish? Yeah, or, okay. And have we received any public comment? Okay. Then we will go into our next agenda item. And so, we welcome back Monica and A.J. to help us, to help support us as a governance team. So, good morning. We're all yours.
Oh, yes, we have microphones today. Uh-oh, on the mic now. Great to be with you. Before we dive into today's work, I just want to open the floor to create opportunity to reflect on yesterday's conversations. What's something you took away from our time together yesterday? What's something you got, something you learned, or something you took away from our time together yesterday? Who will be the first to share?
I think for me, it reinforced that the board and governance team are student-focused, that all of our conversations and our statements were around achievement for students and not the management-type things, but that there is an appreciation for the outcomes and not concentrating specifically always on the inputs and the outputs.
Well, for me, it was about being grateful for the direction, being grateful for tools that will help us refine our work, refine what we do. I have a great appreciation for my colleagues, for our staff, but knowing how to do things the right way and knowing how we can be better at what we do is going to benefit the district, it's going to benefit the kids ultimately. So, for me, it was a feeling of gratitude that we're going through this process.
Much of what we're doing in the Long Beach Unified is right on mark.
Sorry. I agree with my colleagues. I appreciate that we're deliberately taking some time to have these conversations and particularly in light of what we spoke yesterday, that we have a, how many years is it between you and Felton, John? Thirty-two, thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years of experience. So, I appreciate being able to take the time as a board collectively to engage in these critical conversations.
I just want to add too, just grateful for the pause in processes to think about our team, our governance team, and what that will look like in the future. The discussion about inputs, outputs, and outcomes is very important as we think about preparing for the launch of a new strategic plan for the future and what the systems will look like and what the governance and staff's work will look like relative to that strategic plan. So, just beginning probably a year-long process that will help us to really see the future together. And I appreciated the candor in the conversation relative to its connection to my evaluation and just working towards clarity of new things together.
Felton, would you like to share some reflections from yesterday? Dr. Williams, can you hear us? I think we're having technical problems. Oh, Dr. Williams, would you like to share some reflections from yesterday?
Dr. Williams, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Matter of fact, I've got my headphones all set up so I can get a little better reception. So, let me grab my headphones.
Just for some feedback, I can hear you great on my end.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. I just wanted to make sure that Dr. Williams had an opportunity to share.
Felton, as you reflect on our conversation yesterday, anything stand out, anything particularly Felton, this is A.J. Can you hear me? Felton, can you hear me? This is A.J.
Can you hear me?
Hello.
Wait, yeah.
Felton, I'd invited the other board members to reflect. Is there anything from our conversation yesterday that really resonated with you? Anything you took away from the conversation you'd like to share this morning? Felton, can you hear me? Felton, can you hear me? I was wondering, is there anything from yesterday's conversation that, any reflections you have from our conversation yesterday? Anything you learned or took away?
It's not coming through clear though. Could you get closer to the microphone, A.J.?
Yeah, was there anything that you took away from our conversation yesterday that you'd like to share?
Oops, I lost you. Just a minute. Okay. You want, you want to take away from the conversation yesterday?
Yeah, I was wondering, is there anything in our conversation yesterday? Any key takeaways from our conversation yesterday that you'd like to share?
Well, I thought the opening part of that in terms of getting some background on how we looked at governance as a, you know, in terms of our work. But the, I think the pieces that were really generic have to do with our work to date in terms of what we've been able to accomplish as a board and what we need to do moving forward as a board to continue that work or to improve on it. But we've done a lot of work in terms of student improvement, and I think you mentioned that in part of the conversation yesterday, as Long Beach being a leader in that area. So, I think it would be good, it was good being able to reflect on that work, you know, as part of where we have been. And now, where we're trying to go is how we collectively work a little bit better as a board in terms of our governance. So, that was a discussion leading up to your being here to facilitate this, this work is we've got some new board members who've come on, and you've got two old board members. I don't mean that in terms of age, we've been around a while, but generically, we're leaving. These two board members need to understand what collective governance looks like, what that sounds like, and what that role means as a school board member. And the last piece I want to add to that from our discussion yesterday is the fact that school boards and board members are part of the community that they serve. We can't separate out the community that we represent, and all of our actions, to a large degree, are reflected through that community. So, if they're unhappy with us, they vote us out. And we have constituents, each and every one of us as board members, we all have different constituents that we have to listen to. So, we bring all of that to bear when we sit down and we try to look at governance as a board, we're reflecting on those. And as just one example, and I'll just, I'll just stop. When we made the push to bring more students into AP in the district, we knew that part of that challenge was going to be shifting resources from the east side of Long Beach to the west side of Long Beach. And that was going to be something that we had to deal with as a school board. And, you know, the, again, you've got board members representing that side of town, and their constituents will be talking to them about shifting those resources, and those board members, or that board member has to contend with the fact that you've got folks in his, in his district that are concerned about moving those resources. And so, all of that has to be balanced within the context of governance. We've got to look at that as a reality, not only for our board, I mean, as we, as we move forward, but that's an inherent nature in all school boards as reflected in their constituents and how their constituents are interacting with them about things that we do. And again, that can be seen in the, in the end result in you get re-elected. And, you know, you try not to reflect on that, you try to reflect on what's best for your students, but that is a reality. So, I'm just going to stop right there, A.J.
So, after the game, effective coaches go back and replay the video. Why do effective coaches behave this way?
I'm sorry, was that a question to me, A.J.?
All of you.
Oh. For some reason, I'm not picking you up very clearly here.
After the game, effective coaches go back and replay the video. Why do effective coaches behave this way?
They want to reinforce the things that are done well, and they want to correct the things that were done well.
Yeah, reinforce the things that are done well, correct things that weren't done well. Why do effective coaches go back and replay the video?
I think to see things they may have missed because they were focused on one area during the game and didn't realize something else happened on this side of the field earlier. So, to get a broader picture of what happened across the whole game.
Yeah, see things they may have missed, get a broader picture of what happened.
By the way, it reflects very much on their ability to compute as well. They can find flaws or strengths in the left-hand and right-hand area.
Yeah, this is introspection as well. Can I find the strengths and flaws in, in what I've been doing? Yeah, absolutely. In much the same way that effective coach replays the video, a significant portion of our work today is going to be guided toward replaying the board's video for all the same reasons that effective coach would do. Does effective coach only replay the video if they lose the game?
Probably more than once.
But do they only do that if they lose the game? Well, if you won the game, why do you need to replay the video?
I think to see what went well, what worked, so you can duplicate that.
Yeah, they also want to see what worked, so you can duplicate that. Why else might a coach who won the game still replay the video?
Because sometimes you win by luck or by chance, or by a mistake, a forced error on somebody else. We won't talk about the Dodger game the other night. So, seeing that you didn't do the process well, it still ended up technically in a win, but the process has some flaws in it.
Yeah, maybe we didn't win as well as we could have. Our win may have had some flaws in it, and so, there's, there's always room for improvement. And so, looking for what are the flaws, even in victory, that we can address that can help us be even more successful next time. Jill, what do you think?
Oh, I was just gonna, I was going to say, to unpack the reason, as Megan described differently, to unpack the reason for the success.
Yeah, unpack the reason for success. Was it intentional? Was it luck? You know, how much of each? And just really looking with an eye toward, how do we improve going forward?
So, part of the homework, you received a little pre-reading before our meeting yesterday. You will be able to find a hard copy of that inside the binder that you have in front of you. So, if you can please go ahead and pull out that pre-reading assignment that was given.
It's on the immediate inside of the folder.
Right. Yeah, it looks a little different. If you read it online, it looks different, but it's the printed copy that's on the inside, left-hand pocket.
So, as you reflect on that pre-reading and we reflect on the conversation that we had yesterday, what connections are you making? What connections do you see between the pre-reading assignment and our conversations yesterday?
I thought that our conversations were very consistent with two things that I pulled out from the readings. One, that the purpose of our school systems is to improve student outcomes. We talked about that yesterday. And then, I don't remember which order I read them in, but the other reading emphasized that the role of a school board is to represent the vision and values of our community. Again, our conversation was either deliberately or organically guided by both of those.
Yeah, so two connections on boards exist to improve student outcomes, and then the conversation on the board representing the vision of the community. Thank you, Juan. Who go next? What connections are you making?
I think we're reinforcing the, the roles that we each play between governance and the management side of the house. We're really reinforcing those, those roles and clarifying them, defining them. So, it's a continued conversation.
Yeah, so clarification on the roles that you play as a board, and then what would be the role when we're talking about the manager's side with your superintendent? Thank you, Diana. Brent, what connections are you making?
So, for me, the primary connections that I'm concerned with and that I'm making have to do with the bridge from the past to the future. As A.J. says, there's been some tremendous successes in the past, but how do we build the bridge, keep the bridge, preserve the bridge, and expand the bridge? So, if the successes of the future, the success of the past translate into widening and expanding successes of the future?
Yes. Thank you, Brent. Feel free to scan through that hard copy of the pre-reading. What other connections are you making? John?
Well, I think an obvious question to reflect on is Carl Cohn was our superintendent for, what, more than 10 years, and Chris Steinhouser for another, what, 13? What is it about the board constituency and their values that perpetrated that kind of stability? I think that's unique in terms of urban districts throughout the nation to have that kind of stability. So, I would begin by saying, from my experience, it was a lack of divisiveness among board members, except for one short time in history, the board members have always put the welfare and the outcome of students first. And I think that's been a big strength that has supported the superintendency of Carl, of Chris, and is going to be the same for Jill, I'm sure.
Thank you, John. What connections are you making between the pre-reading and our conversation yesterday?
I see a connection, and hopefully, we get to dive into this a little bit more. We talked yesterday about culture, and there definitely is this elusive, from my perspective, sense of what, what is the culture? You know, we oftentimes hear phrases like the Long Beach Way, Mr. Meyer just alluded to. We've basically had, before I knew a superintendent, two superintendents for over two decades, two school board members that are transitioning away. And I think oftentimes, when things are done well for a long period of time, the culture enables for more of that to be done. But I think it's also important to be mindful of the difficulty it is when you are successful, when you have been reviewing the tapes from the games, that it's, it's not bad to get others' perspectives, all right? But institutionally, it is very difficult for institutions. If the institution has had overall success, it's not as easy for that same institution to both create spaces, but also acknowledge those spaces where things can improve, right? So, that's part of the reason that I'm very appreciative of us having this conversation, because I am hopeful that, especially for me, that I haven't been around when some of these things have happened, at least on the inside, right, from the school district end. And I think the connection for me is that our communities are also different than they were 20 or 30 years ago. So, the vision and the alignment of the core values, I think it's important for us to be mindful that we have a different community, we have many things that are different. I think Felton alluded to, it was hard for him when you asked him, A.J., to take himself back to what he was thinking about when he first entered the school board, right? So, I appreciate an opportunity here in terms of the connections to the reading to talk about the how we do things.
Yes. Thank you, Juan.
Kind of an ephemeral observation also, except for, an ephemeral observation, except for one or two exceptions. My observation and experience going way back with board members is that very, very few of them have used it as a stepping stone for higher political office. That is, they chose to run for a board position because they wanted to do all they could to advance the success of our students.
I'll, I'll just respectfully disagree. There is no higher political office. You know, school board is as high as it gets, everything else is downhill from here.
Okay. It's interesting, though. I've never thought of a board member as being a politician, you know? I think the motives are much deeper than that, so.
I think for me, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Juan said when you talked about the vision and values of community. And one of the phrases you used yesterday that I appreciated was the idea that these are the values that will be adhered to along the way. And so, the along-the-way part, how do we adhere to the values of a community, as Juan said, that looks different than when my kids even started 20 years ago in the district? And acknowledging my space in the community I represent and being authentic to the values that they have, which may be different than they were 20 years ago, or the values that I had for my kid 15 years ago. So, I think the being open to the what's next and the visioning, I'm grateful that we've had such wonderful superintendents and managers of the work. And so, we haven't had necessarily to get bogged down in some of the minutia and the details. We still have, and we do occasionally. We are far from perfect in that. But I look forward to this idea of really taking a hard look at what the values are today, 2020, mid-post-COVID, new leadership, new board members, to see what's next for Long Beach Unified moving forward. And so, but remembering that those values that we've had along the way that have been instilled for generations, that garnered some of our best success, are part of that work.
Thank you, Megan. So, throughout this work, we're going to be working on those values. What are the values of the community? And you are going to make those values stand up and let the superintendent know, these are the values at Long Beach through your guardrails. We will continue our work with the vision, right? Your, your task as board members is to make sure that you have the vision for your students and make that vocal and known to your superintendent. So, your vision will be developed through those goals. And like John was mentioning, you know, thinking back and replaying that tape, what has worked? Where are we at right now? And what is it that we want to do with our kids? Where do we want them to be at? So, as a board, you will be developing those goals, you will be developing the guardrails, and you are going to be giving those to your superintendent, letting her know, this is where we want our kids to be at in three to five years, and you can do whatever you want, except, you know, do not engage in this behavior for those guardrails. And the guardrails, remember, that will be the values of your community. So, she's going to be able to, we're going to begin to see that distinction between what is going to be your role as a board and what's going to be her role as a manager. And we're going to make that a little bit clearer as far as the roles and responsibilities for you and the roles and the responsibilities for your superintendent. So, as we continue to reflect in that conversation that we had yesterday and the pre-reading, why do goals matter? Why are we going back to the conversation of inputs, output, outcomes, the student outcomes and student outcome goals? Why are we going back and anchoring us back again to those goals?
I think it's because you have to know what you're working towards. You have to know what, well, I don't want to say endgame because it's never an endgame, it's an ongoing process, but you have to know what you're working towards, you have to know where you've come from, and you have to have a target point of where you want to be. So, it gives a direction and focus to the work.
Thank you, Diana. Yes, it gives us direction, it lets us know where we were at, where do we want to go, and it gives that clear direction to where we want to be at. Thank you.
I think for me, A.J. mentioned this again yesterday when we talked about systems alignment, that having those goals help keep us as a board focused on the bigger endgame of what that is and not getting necessarily bogged down in the latest project or initiative that may help us get there, but that the, the project itself or the initiative itself doesn't become the focus of our work, that the focus is still always the outcome, and that viewing that project or initiative as a tool to get us there, kind of like, it's fun to talk about what the input is and the cool project we're doing, but does it focus us back on the outcome?
Yeah, it's always fun to talk about inputs. We want to know about inputs, right? But at the end of the day, it's, are those inputs getting us to the goal that you have set up for, for your children? It's kind of like, it reminds me of that movie, have you all seen Finding Nemo? So, you know how in Finding Nemo, there was this time when Nemo got caught in the, what's it called, the red? it called, the red? The, no, the, where they fish the net?
The net.
He got caught in the net, right? And all, this is like full of fish. And the fish, they have the same goal, they are trying to get out of the net. So everybody has the same, they want the same outcome, they want to be, you know, freed from the net so they can continue living their fish lives. So everybody had the same outcome. However, they had a different understanding on how to do it. All the fish kept swimming in different directions. What do you remember happened? How were they able to get out? You remember, it's, I know that it's an old, old, and then it's a children's...
I'm like, my kids are a vintage Finding Nemo age, though. They started to work together and they all realized that if they swam down, that they would all accomplish the goal together and get the end result that they wanted, but they had to do, they had to work together and do the same thing.
Yeah. So Nemo, you know, he saw like everybody fishing, swimming in different directions, and then he realized, hey, if we all swim down, then the weight of the fish trying to swim down will make, you know, will break the trunk or the net that they had. So even though at first they had the same, they wanted the same outcome, they wanted to get out of the net. Everybody was going in different directions, they had a different misunderstanding. Once they set the expectation of, we need to swim down, that's the outcome that we want, and all of us are going to be swimming down, then that's how they were able to accomplish their outcome that they were seeking. That is one of the reasons why we're spending this time on talking about student outcome goals. Yesterday, you were asked to reflect on those 15 words. What do you expect, you know, what will you like to have accomplished at the end of your service? And all of you talked about improving student outcomes. All of you had that same goal of doing what's best for your kids. However, that may look different to each one of you. So as we're thinking about these student outcome goals, that, the intent of that is for us to have that same expectation, so we're all swimming in the same direction instead of swimming in different places, trying to accomplish the same thing.
If I may interject this, as A.J. said, if we're rewinding the film, I was really struck by this comment in "Why Isn't Enough? Boards Also Need How." Simply put, the design of most school board meetings and processes is focused on managing adult inputs, not governing for student outcomes. I think that's something we really need to remember as a board. Maybe it's a careless observation, but it seemed like our board meetings have spent too much time accommodating adult inputs rather than focusing on student outcomes.
We're definitely going to spend some of our time as we, in some cases, literally rewind the video of board meetings and watch again, to begin to look at, to what extent is that the case? That is actually a measurable phenomenon. And there is value in the board being intentional about measuring how focused were we on the things that we say matter. It's simply not enough to, for everyone to want great things for children. It is simply not sufficient. Because just because they're all one out of the net doesn't mean they're all swimming down. The word that you all use in a document that we read that included superintendent's goals in it, actually bridged off from the idea of alignment to a much more specific term, coherence. This idea that, that the alignment should be of the character that not only are we all swimming in the same direction, but we all fully understand why we're swimming in the same direction, and that we're all bought into the idea of swimming in the same direction. Alignment generally means we're all going in the same direction, and that's, that is a prerequisite, you know, for success in large organizations. But you all take it one step further to this idea of coherence, which really describes, not only are we swimming in the same direction, but if you ask any of the people in our team, we all know why we happen to be swimming down right now as opposed to north, east, or west, or south. And so this is absolutely the nature of the work. You can't divorce one from the other. Jill?
Just want to add something that I was thinking about after yesterday's session and in light of the reading, too. Two things. One is just about clarity, and I think that the conversation about goals and guardrails related to the criteria for decision-making can be really helpful. I know oftentimes, community or the public wonders about criteria that the board uses for their decision-making, and I think that gives an opportunity for our board to be more transparent, because they do such good thinking, but it gives away, when your goals are clear and your guardrails are clear, it gives the board a way just to anchor back to the criteria for the decisions that they're making. And then the second thing I think is that it's incumbent on all of us, me as leader and manager, as you call it, and the board, to think about succession planning. And so I think about that somewhat obsessively with staff, and that I hope that from, you know, from the moment that I took over for Mr. Steinhauser, that's part of what I'm thinking about in my, hopefully more than a decade of work that I will do as superintendent. And succession planning for me is both about people and thinking about this board's attention to who takes their seat when it is their time to retire or to do something else. It's also about processes and systems. And so I love the entry into this conversation about what do we hand off? Because typically, systems have a documentation to them. And while there's a lot of space and room for relationship and informality, I feel that it's incumbent on us as a governance team to be thinking about succession, both of staff, but also about what that means for the board in terms of people and processes. Just want to add that.
Yeah. It's not enough for the board to talk about, here's the outcomes we want for children. And it's not enough for the board to talk about, here are the values our community has. And it's not enough for the board to talk about, here are the behaviors that we're going to engage in to honor all of that. The board really needs to write all that down. You can't achieve this level of coherence without people being able to physically place their hands on, here's the vision, here are the values, here are the behaviors that we're all going to engage in, okay? So the vision is we're getting out, the value is we're going to be safe, you know, the behavior is we're swimming down. Like unless it is literally that clear, you can't expect the degree of coherence that you all described. And, you know, to riff off of what, the point that I heard Juan making it, if I misunderstood you, please correct me. The challenge that you face isn't a challenge around, can we educate children? The challenge that I see you facing is, is the distribution of the quality of that education. Is that fully equitable? Are we, are we able to consistently see that students all across the school system are having equal access to opportunity? Or is it the case that the tremendous success story that is Long Beach is disproportionately concentrated in some places versus the others? If what you're really wanting to see is this emergence of greatness for all students, that will require making the vision plain, making the values plain, and then making the behaviors that support the vision and values plain. There can't be an informality around that. Like you really want to write that down, because that will make it easier to transmit from one set of team members to the next, to the next.
Which I also think it's important that we know that not every board member stays as long as Dr. Williams or Mr. Meyer, because of all different reasons in life. And so it is, again, incumbent on us to think about succession planning from that perspective, that we've been really fortunate, and I hope our three board members will stay that long, but it's not a requirement of the job. And so we need to be prepared when, when board members don't stay 16 or 18 years.
Yeah. To Jill's point, that, that does build up a kind of a system and a structure where you can get continuity in your processes. You know, when you can develop a system of goals and objectives or a strategic framework, that's only part of the process. The biggest part of that process is implementing that strategic framework. And if you've got continuity in your leadership, it makes that a lot easier to be able to implement the strategic goals and objectives, because you have that level of continuity. And you have to have a bit of luck in other things for that to happen, because no one can control the absolute fate of a board election. You can, you can either be non-elected or you can be elected. It depends on voters. We've been fortunate to an extent that we've been able to get re-elected and for, to have our superintendents stay in place. So that's a big plus for Long Beach. That doesn't happen all over this country. We are very fortunate to be able to have those seven circumstances. How often does that happen in other school districts? So that is a blessing in itself when you can have that level of continuity in your leadership, where you can get those things done. You think about those boards where the leadership turns over every two or three years, and what transpires in terms of that, the tenure of those boards? Or that leadership, every time a new superintendent comes on board, that superintendent has to lay out their plans for student achievement. For everybody that's part of that district, that means that if you're turning over, if you're turning over a school board superintendent every two or three years, there is a new set of strategic planning that takes place where everybody in that district has to retool. So how long does it take for a district to get fatigued in that process and basically stop being a school board? So those are some dynamics that are very real across the country. But again, because we have continuity here in Long Beach, that has not been our problem. That has not been our problem because of the continuity in our leadership.
What are you going to call it? However, I can wait my turn, or?
I think I could...
I'll go after Megan.
Yeah, I think a combination of, a couple of different comments. I think the continuity has played to our favor, but, A.J., I appreciate you saying that other people need to be able to put their hands on it. I think a lot of our good work, a lot of our Long Beach Way and traditions live in people and live in experiences and work and shared experiences that people have done together. And for someone who comes to it more recently or doesn't have the same history, it's harder to make, to define what that is. You know, that Long Beach Way is that thing we all talk about, but we haven't been able to talk about it in terms of outcomes and guardrails and hand it to somebody who's never met anybody from Long Beach to have some kind of jumping-off point explainer. So I think that that's important. And I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, yes, we have done great things, I've been proud to be a part of what is, but some of those traditions that we've had in the past may not serve us well moving forward. That there is an opportunity in this moment in history, in this moment of great transition in the board, in leadership, to acknowledge that we all bring our vision and excitement around different things. Dr. Baker is not our previous superintendent, no matter how long she's been in the district. What she brings to the table in terms of her vision and values is different. And so while there's continuity there, having space to say, what's new and exciting, what may have worked well in the past, but we're not going to continue that because we don't think it will serve the students who are in kindergarten in 2020, moving for the next 10 years. So I'm hopeful for the opportunity to honor the continuity and traditions that we've had, but to really make space for a public that's asking different questions, that's engaged in a new way, that is asking us to represent them in ways they didn't think of themselves three or four or five years ago as we move forward. So I want to do all of that good, let's honor what we've done that has been successful. But I'm really interested in making space for the planning of forward with the idea that we bring a great tradition of success, but that there's, you know, there's new people in the room. On, you know, there's new people coming to board meetings, there's new people in leadership, all of those things. So I want to honor the traditions and the Long Beach Way stuff, but I want to make sure that we serve, you know, five-year-olds in 2020 with the Long Beach Way that will work best for them in their career.
Yeah. And, A.J., you started that conversation with, you know, why do effective coaches go back and review their tape, right? He didn't ask, why do coaches, you know, whose team loses their game every weekend, why do they go back and review their tape? He said, why do effective coaches review their, replay their tape? So as we're thinking about this process, recognizing that you've accomplished a lot of amazing things, but there's always going to be that room for improvement. The behavior that you exhibit during your board meetings, how you behave as a board, that is going to trickle down to what happens at your campuses, in the classrooms, with the students. So if your community members, if your students see that you are going back and you're reflecting, you're recognizing what has been working, and then you're coming up with a plan to continue to move forward, where it's like, it's not going to be like, hey, you know, we are at this level, we've arrived, we're just going to chill until, you know, something else happens, right? There's always going to be that room for improvement. We want our teachers to reflect on their practice and improve. We want students to go back and reflect on their learning and come up with a plan to continue improving. So you are going to be modeling that at the board level. As a board, there's things that you have been doing that have been great and have been working for your community, but there's also space to continue that growth. Juan?
Yeah, thank you, Monica. And just, just building on Megan's comment, I think the nuance, or part of the nuance becomes the balance between honoring tradition, accounting for longevity, and continuity. But at the same time, and they're not counter to each other, but they're certainly not of, there isn't like a fine line where you divide one and the other, but the other part is, some of us are entering, or I shouldn't say some of, the continuity and longevity is also impacted by, we all have a different sense of pacing, speed, and urgency, right? And I think to build off of the analogy of a coach, at some point, systems change, right? Coaching styles change. And, and in appreciation for what worked, I think there's also, you know, there's no team that has the same system, you know, the whole time, all right? And that either comes from a coach changing, or changing staff, or changing perspective, or that coach, for whatever reason, stepping down or retiring a new coach, a new team coming in. And, and that sometimes is not smooth, right? And then you have fans that say, oh, why can't we still do things this way, the way we've always done it? And other fans are like, again, there's a new sense of urgency and new perspective. So I think that balancing is important in the sense of not just acknowledging, but what tools, what resources can we utilize, and in the cases that we may not have them develop? Because I think communities do come in, in cycles, right? And it's usually when you have a student in the district, and when you have a new student in the district, there's a new perspective, a new sense of urgency, versus a parent that has had a student from kindergarten to high school, you know, has found, in some cases, a comfort zone on how they interact. So to Megan's point, we have new folks, for instance, in public comment. My hope is that those folks continue with us, so it's not like they're just right now during this last eight months, and that they also grow alongside with how important it is, to bring it back to your point, Monica, with the timelines that we set for goals, right? Because if, if a parent is coming in right now and they're hearing like, in five years or in 10 years, we're going to do that, how does that impact my student today, here and now, versus a parent that's maybe three or five years in that has seen the improvements, that has experienced the engagement? That impacts how we interact and engage with those parts of our community. I'm saying all that in the spirit of what's been shared, and I think the balance for me is, you know, how we go about, right, to bring it back to the readings.
Can you, did you have a comment?
That's well said, Dr. Benitez. But it strikes me, too, that some coaches say, winning isn't the only thing, it's everything. And there's some flaws in that philosophy. However, it doesn't seem to me that we're off the mark by saying, student outcomes are the only thing. And I think that's a universal value that should be carried through regardless of changes of superintendents or board members or whatever, it's student outcomes.
You're definitely going to hear us reiterate that point. So if you disagree, now would be a good time to probably leave.
Let, let me just quickly jump in. I want to clarify the earlier statement when I talked about... I want to clarify the earlier statement when I talked about, when I talked about longevity and leadership. Along with that, that process and being able to implement change, it also means that your strategic framework is revisited on a frequent basis, every two, three, four, five years. And in that strategic framework, you're reflecting the changes that have occurred in your district, in your community. And whatever those changes and values are, they have to be implemented as a process. So there is currency in that process of being able to look and see where things have moved in terms of your district and your students, and the changes in the, in the students that are coming to your district. But that's pretty much captured in being able to, to sit down and engage in your strategic framework. Now, your strategic framework is the broad representation of folks in and outside the district who are bringing that information into that process. So what you're developing, hopefully, are some current needs that are, that have taken place over the years. And with that continuity and leadership, you're able to implement those changes. And that's where I was going with that, with that statement.
One of the things we did yesterday is we took a little quiz. And in that quiz, we had questions four and five. Question number four, what are the three behaviors of the board going to have the biggest influence on creating the conditions for improved student performance? Question number five was, what are the three behaviors of the board that could do the most harm to creating the conditions for improved student performance? Let's jump back into that. What answers did you come up with for question four? What are board behaviors that could have the biggest impact on creating the context for improved student performance? What are some of the things that you wrote down? What were your three? Who will be the first to share? Please hit your button. So what, what, what three, what three behaviors did you write down?
Number one, we need to gather information from our research department to determine where our kids are so that we can plan and encourage where we want to go.
Okay. And then what was, did you have three? There was one. Did you have two others?
Well, then, we have to make sure that we approve budget expen, for example, we have a thing in the Long Beach Unified called a TOSA, a Teacher on Special Assignment, which means in needy classrooms, we have more than one teacher, we have two teachers. Well, in order for the board to approve that kind of thing, the superintendent needs to, research needs to give us the information to indicate we've got real challenges in this school, at these schools, in these classrooms. We advise, we recommend, the superintendent would say, funding an additional teacher in English, Language Arts, and Math in those classrooms. So we gather that information, we approve it, and the end result is improved student Did I ramble? Maybe I did.
So, so what I heard is, listen to research that describes where our students are and where we need them to be, and then vote in ways that align resources with that.
That's right.
Okay.
The, the, the educational plan needs to come from our experts, the superintendent and her staff. And it's our responsibility then to fund it, to make sure that happens.
All right. Who else? What were your three items? What are the board behaviors that can most create the conditions for student, improved student performance? Who else? What were your three?
I forgot I'm at home, AJ, but I remember what I wrote.
All right.
The first one was listening to our communities. The second was, and I forgot how I worded it, but in a sense, working with our superintendent and executive staff on the progress toward our developed goals and vision. And then the third was, oh, what did I write? I think it was assuring that our policies and budget decisions uphold communities' vision and values toward those goals.
All right. Megan?
I had a question in terms of the why are we doing things? What is it, how is it helping, as my dad would say? Question collaborate and evaluate. So collaboration with staff, collaboration with our community members, and evaluating the practices to see if they're effective. So question collaborate and evaluate.
Anyone else? What'd you, what'd you write down? What were the top three school board behaviors that you felt would really create the conditions for improved student performance?
Let me go, AJ. Belief in the ability that all students have the capacity to learn, one. Holding students accountable for high standards. And making sure you have professional development for staff and teachers so that they understand that these students do have the capacity and the ability to learn. And being able to, 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 to align those things for students who don't feel connected to our schools, who feel alienated or disenfranchised, that does a lot in, in terms of their looking at themselves, that they are held to the, to the extent that they do have the capacity to learn, that teachers and staff believe they have that capacity to learn, and that you're changing the behaviors of everybody around them to recognize that.
Thank you.
If I may support Dr. Williams' viewpoint on staff development again. We have a tremendous thrust going forward now on the issue of equity. And staff development is so vital to that. Besides the finessing of teaching a subject, math or literacy, or whatever it is, equity is a big, big challenge for staff development, in my view, in the Long Beach Unified School District.
Anyone else? What were your three behaviors? Anyone else? All right, let's hear the other side of the coin. What three behaviors did you identify that you felt could do the most harm to creating the conditions for student success? What was your answer to number five?
I just worded it in not listening to the community, not engaging with our superintendent around measured goals, and not upholding communities' vision for achieving.
I appreciate the efficiency of that approach. Anyone else? What'd you, what'd you write down?
I wrote mistrust, micromanaging, or being involved in managing, and lack of focus.
What'd you mean by lack of focus?
Being distracted by other things happening, a lack of focus in being able to come together as a group, because our, our effectiveness is tied to the five of us. It's not us as individuals, but it's us as a group. So if we're distracted and we're going in different directions, like the fish in the net, we're not being effective. And so those distractions and those things that take us away from the work are detrimental to what we need to do. So that's what I meant by lack of focus.
Anyone else? What are the behaviors of the board that can create the most harm?
Lack of collegiality and divisiveness. We are elected by districts, yet there's a danger, I suppose, in a board member from one district being selfish and egocentric and wanting things to take from other districts to enhance theirs. That, I've never seen that happen since I've been on the board, but I suppose that's a danger.
Let me go, AJ. And mine's are counter to the ones that I've mentioned earlier. That is a lack of belief in the ability of all students to learn, not holding students to high standards, and not holding teachers and staff accountable for learning for all students.
Mine are mostly what everyone else has already said. Interference in management, and a distrust or disingenuousness of service to colleagues on the board, or a lack of honesty can be destructive. And focusing on projects, kind of that ooh shiny stuff, and being caught by whatever's the latest, the newest, and forgetting that what we do has to be in service to that longer-term goal. And so getting distracted from the goals.
Yeah, I didn't suppose you had any ideas you wanted to toss in?
Many of them were already shared. I think about the behavior of having a lot of dialogue around something that has many different perspectives. And so on a positive, I think of that as part of an effective team, that you listen and talk through many different perspectives that are being brought to, to solve a problem or to a vision. And I guess the flip side of that is just not talking about things, not discussing different perspectives. And I've appreciated when our board has really vetted ideas through their different perspectives and brought those perspectives into a decision. I see that as part of our effectiveness.
How do you measure whether or not the board is engaging on the effective side of the ledger rather than on the harmful side of the ledger? How would you measure that? How would you know?
We have to go back to student outcomes, don't we? What's happening with our students?
So, so one way to measure it is, do we see improvements for students?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. What else? How would you know if the board is actually being effective versus harmful? How would you know? How would you measure that?
Moreover, I guess you'd get an indication by how they vote on critical issues. Is it three to two? Is it four to one? Is it two, two and an abstention? And if there's a continued pattern of divisiveness, something must be wrong.
You, you set yardsticks in place when you put it, when you put your strategic goals and objectives. That's your found, that is your foundation. And those strategic goals and objectives tell you whether or not you're moving and achieving certain, certain goals. So that is your foundation for looking at how you're, you're working to improve student outcomes. But that, you're, you're building everything around those metrics. And those metrics serve to inform you or not, whether you're going, it's like you're establishing your direction with your strategic goals and objectives, your strategic framework. And that's how you're looking at your work. That's what's being reflected in how you're looking at the work that you said you wanted to accomplish.
Anyone else? How would you measure whether or not the board is being effective or harmful? How would you measure that?
You changed the question a bit. And, because I didn't put the harmful piece in. I think if, if we're looking at, are we effective, it's that idea of roll the tape. Are the conversations that we had as a board robust around the outcome? Or are they robust around the input? So if somebody's looking from the outside, can they tell by the discussion we're having on any particular item that it is about our values, our goals and guardrails? Or if they tuned in, does it have nothing to do with anything they've ever heard us talk about before? Or it feels a side issue that isn't in service to the goals and guardrails?
Also think about, we, we talk about students and standards. And so by grade level, by course, we think about what we want our students to know and be able to do. And I'm aware, like our board is, that there are governance standards that can be used to determine what we want board members to know and be able to do as a means of gauging their progress towards the use or the, the, living out the standards in the board setting and in their work as individual board members and as a, as a governance team. So I think there's an opportunity, whether it's a self-assessment or the use of standards to drive a continual discussion about the work of the board, that could also be a place to, for us to look.
How, how would you measure, how would you know whether or not the board's actually being effective? How would you measure that?
I think one way to look at the effectiveness of a board is to see how the staff feels about the board. Does the staff feel supported by the board? Does the staff have the, is the staff provided with the, with the space to innovate, to come up with new ideas? One of the, I think one of the things that we do really well is we allow the staff to do their jobs in a way that is creative, innovative. For example, we've been able to roll out programs like our, our college, our college report for high school students. We've actually done that for middle school students also. There are a lot of things that we've been able to do in our district that districts, that other districts haven't been able to do. And I think part of that is because as a board, we are supportive of the staff. And we allow them the resources, the, the space to do these things. And I think that's one area that we can measure the effectiveness of the, of the board.
So I, I would say, because we're elected, the, the way that we can measure is if we're successfully achieving the collective vision of our communities. And I think that aligns well with what everyone has shared, that one of the ways, and in the way that we've expressed, the most important way is whether we're achieving, improving student outcomes as they reflect our collective community vision. So achieving vision in whatever, at whatever part we're in with the timeframe for that vision would be a way to, to measure. So I guess if we're here on the board, being elected, the community must think that we are achieving its vision for, around student outcomes. We have two school board members here that have been here. How many, how many times have you, how many, how many terms have you served, John?
Well, I'm in my 17th year, so that's what, three and a half terms?
So, community must think that we have been achieving the vision, otherwise, I'll leave it at that.
Well, AJ, I'm not sure if your intent is to make us feel guilty, but I think I do, because I think I remember you writing to us that boards should spend at least 50% of their time evaluating student incomes and discussing how we might improve student incomes.
Outcomes.
I'm not sure that we spend that much time on that topic, do we? Maybe we should.
Listen, now we're starting to have an interesting conversation. Let's, let's go ahead and dial this up a bit. One of the things that was consistent across a lot of your comments was this idea that the board is focused, that the board is really paying attention to what are the results you're producing for students, you know, that there is a shared understanding of what the vision is, and that we're all swimming in that general direction. So let's test that in a few different ways. The first way to test that is, I want everyone to write, and so that's at least six of you who should be writing at this point. What are the current goals that the board has adopted for student, for the district? What are the current goals that the board has adopted for the district? Go ahead and write those down now. What are the goals that the board has adopted? What are the goals that the board has adopted for the district? That the board has adopted for the district, correct. Go ahead and write those down now. I still see a few folks writing, so give folks a few more minutes. Go ahead and write down the goals the board has adopted for the district. All right. All right, so by show of fingers, kind of shake them out. I know they're a little bit chilly at the moment. By show of fingers, how many board, how many goals has the board adopted for the district? Everybody, go ahead and show me. How many goals has the board adopted? How many goals has the board adopted? Go ahead and show of fingers, how many? I don't know, whatever you wrote down. Whatever is true for right now. So I've got four, I've got five, I've got five, I've got five. Five, how many? Three. Megan, what do you have? Six. All right. All right, so it seems to be somewhere between three and six. I think right now the mode is five. So before we go any further, what does that tell you?
Did you repeat the question, AJ? I didn't hear it.
The answers given were somewhere between three and six, with all the different answers being three, four, five, 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 and six. So among six people, those were the answers. Three, four, five, 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 and six. So step one, before we even get to which goals did you write down, which now I'm super curious about, what does this first step in the conversation tell you?
That we're not sure what the goals are.
Yeah, who else? What does this first step tell you?
Well, isn't it true that we as a board have never developed our own goals?
Okay, so that's an interesting question. Juan, what are you thinking?
I was gonna ask Jill what she said. Did you say four, Jill?
Everybody's looking at the superintendent.
At least I'm in alignment with our superintendent.
Like, I don't know if I'm right or not, but at least I'm lined up with the superintendent. Who else? So what's this first step? Before we even get to what you wrote down, which should be interesting here in a moment, but what does this first step tell you?
AJ, out of, and you may know this already, I think we have two, I'm gonna speak for, I'm drawing from two sets of goals because we have been having a conversation around developing our superintendent goals. And we did have goals that came out of a strategic plan. And they're not mutually exclusive of each other, but in the last few months, we have been drawing, just, I'm trying to save our board here. We have been drawing from two, two sets of goals. One is our superintendent goals that we have had very concrete, deliberate, specific conversations around. And the other, around our previously established strategic plan.
And I would echo that as well, that I think I've always been aware and have been part of planning of a strategic plan for the district, even before I was on the board. I can't recall sitting down and having conversations about what our goals are exclusive of what a superintendent's goals are. That my recollections are around, these are the superintendent's goals. We'll evaluate those goals in an evaluation, but I can't recall in my six years having a conversation of what do us as a board, the five of us here, what are we focused on? I think it's always been enmeshed in what the superintendent's goals are, which are enmeshed in what the strategic plan is and now what the LCAP says, because there's all those different documents. But I don't recall a time having a specific perspective.
That's a polished admission of guilt.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I'm not shying away from it. I'm saying there's lots of goals and lots of great focus, but if you're asking, have we sat down? I don't recall a conversation sitting down saying, these are the goals of us as a board as we move forward in support of the superintendent.
In that moment, who is representing the values, the vision of the community? In the moment that you choose not to, for the board to adopt goals for the district, who is then representing the vision of the community?
I think this is one of those fuzzy traditions.
No, yeah, let me clarify. The answer to my question is not at all fuzzy. Are there goals?
Specific to how the board behaves?
No, no, no. Are there goals for the district right now?
For the district, yes.
Did the board create them?
Yes, we did. And we created those goals with a number of stakeholders, representing the community and also the union. It was very inclusive in terms of all the folks that were brought in to develop our strategic goals and objectives.
All right, so now I'm hearing significant difference of opinion on, one, whether or not their goals that the board has adopted, and, two, what role the board played in that.
In addition to that, we also, before Megan and Diana and Juan came on the board, we brought in a gentleman to help us develop board goals. And so that was a process that we put in place as well. Now, the superintendent normally drew his work for the year from our strategic goals. And he shared that work for the year with the board as the, to get their input relative to that work. And at the end of the year, the superintendent had us evaluate that work. So that was all based on the strategic goals and objectives that were in place.
So Felton brings in a really interesting point. He starts to talk about the relationship between the goals the board has adopted and the evaluation of the superintendent. So are those two separate things, or are those the same thing?
They were designed to be mutual, AJ. Why would you want to deviate from the very general plan of your district? The general plan is your strategic goals and objectives. The superintendent's job is to implement them. And that's what he does when he draws his work for the year from the strategic goals. He gives that information to members of the board to vet those goals and make sure that they're aligned with what the board sees as important. And then he has his staff carry out those goals. And at the end of the year, we evaluate them. So there is consistency in that process.
Anyone else thoughts on this?
Well, to me, we have the strategic goals, and that's what Dr. Williams was talking about with the collaboration with our stakeholders, that type of thing. And the superintendent goals are the, that's the input from the superintendent. Those are the, those are the ways in which we're working towards the outcomes or the goals. Felton, correct me. Correct me if I'm saying something different than what you were saying.
Well, the, actually, the superintendent is taking his goals from the broad framework of the strategic goals of the district. And as part of that process, before he moves forward with that, so he's being consistent with what the broad outlay is in terms of the strategic goals and what part of that he wants to be able to accomplish at any given time. One of the conversations that we had early on, and John had mentioned the problems that we were running into with two board members who came on and were creating a lot of calamity for us. And oftentimes, when the superintendent would come back and report that he had done X and Y, he was getting beat up by those board members. He was being excruciated in closed session. So our suggestion was, Chris, why don't you take your goals from the strategic plan? And he began to do that. And the other part of that was to make sure that we okay those goals so that you don't get beat up by these board members. And so that was a part of him sharing those goals with the board members to be vetted. And in that respect, those two individuals could not come back at him and say, why did you do this and why did you do that? Because we had set in place a process for all the board members to approve that, the goals going forward for that year. So that was the rationale behind what we did and why we set that up.
So this, what I'm hearing is some approaches that the board took trying to be adaptive to the circumstances of the time. And so I certainly don't know what the circumstances of the time were, so I'm definitely not in a position to judge. What I will suggest to you is that our recommendation is now, is always going to be, the board is very clear about what is the vision? What do we actually want to see students know and be able to do? What are the values? What are the things that the superintendent can't do because they'd be in violation of, you know, the collective values of the community? And that that be the basis of superintendent evaluation, that you get clear about what those are. And either there is progress made relative to that, in which case the superintendent did their job, or there's not progress made relative to that, in which case the superintendent did not do their job. What we would strongly encourage you away from on a go-forward basis is evaluating a superintendent on their implementation of their strategies. So if the super, so if the outcome that you want for children is that we close the opportunity and achievement gaps between two different groups of students, maybe our more affluent and our less affluent students from more and less affluent families. If the goal is we want to see a closure of that gap such that our students, you know, who are further behind are catching up. And the superintendent says, the strategy I'm going to use to accomplish that, you know, is I'm going to increase, you know, the availability of tutoring for students who are behind. We would never encourage the board to evaluate the superintendent based on the effective deployment of tutoring services. What would we expect the board to evaluate the superintendent on?
Can I correct my statement? I think we're doing, and I'll only speak for myself, I'm doing a lot of reflecting of six years as a board member, for sure. I will say that we did have a conversation around very specific goals with our new superintendent over the last six weeks. But had I recalled having a conversation that was specific to that before, I know Dr. Williams referred to something before Diana and I were on the board. Well, I've been on the board for six years. And so that's a long time for me not to have a recollection when I can refer more clearly to things that I did as a parent before I was on the board, specific to a strategic plan in terms of those specific goals that we talked about yesterday of percentage increases of ELA in math or getting to those really specific outcomes. Some of the stuff, and this is an admission of what, I don't know if it's, it's not an admission of anybody else other than my own understanding of my experience of the last six years, is we have a lot of goals. We have lots of things in our LCAP. We have lots of things in our strategic plan. We have this idea of closing the achievement gap by 50%. There are a lot of things that I know that we're focused on, but I cannot point to the place where I could refer someone to see those specific things that isn't 150 pages long.
Well, and you've got a slightly larger problem in that the board, yeah, I heard you say there's a lot of different goals. And I know there's a lot of different things that we're focused on.
In the past. We have five now. I do know that.
Yeah, Juan and then John?
So, thank you, Megan, for, I'm gonna use the same thought process that Megan just shared. So when I joined the board, we had a strategic plan in place with goal areas, right? And that was shared, and our conversations were always in connection to that. I didn't participate as a board member in the process that Felton described, but I knew that a process had taken place and that we had a strategic plan to account for those. The only thing I would add with regards to the superintendent goals is I always saw that process as us co-developing goals as a board with our superintendent. And I don't think my colleagues have said otherwise, but I want to be very intentional that our conversations with Jill were, it wasn't Jill saying, here are my goals, sign off on them. It was a conversation that was mutually agreed upon. What I don't know is, I can only speak for myself, I don't know if that required, Jill, that for us to take a formal, I can't recall us voting and saying, here are the goals that we're going to evaluate the superintendent. But in our last conversation, we did have agreed upon goal areas for a superintendent. So now to answer your question, AJ, around strategy, it wasn't, they weren't around strategy, right? They were, to use the term for mis, smart goals, right? They were measurable. And so on that basis, I, my understanding is that we will evaluate this current superintendent. We did have goals shared with us the previous superintendent year cycle. And on that basis, we evaluated the previous superintendent. So that's been my understanding. We have goals by which we evaluate our superintendent, which are in alignment with the goals in our strategic plan that were adopted prior to me entering the board.
I say this with a smile. We're all acting like we're taking an oral exam and we're dancing around the issue that never, as a board, have we sat down together and developed our goals. Now, we have lots of guardrails we all believe in and talk about them all the time. But, folks, we've never sat down and developed board goals. Isn't that true?
John, if you recall...
And I got a smile on my face, Felton.
John, if you recall, we brought in Dominic Adams to help us with board goals, if you recall. When I was president of the board, I asked Dominic Adams to come in. It was right around the incident involving the two board members that we had problems with. So I asked... So I asked Dominic Adams to come in and help us develop, uh, but instead of, uh, of, of, bridging that gap, what we came up with were metrics, uh, for looking at the performance of all of our students in the district. Uh, and we were able to bring in all of the various programs that we had for student improvement and put them on those metrics so that we can have, we could see those, uh, all in one place. But I wanna ask Jill a question. Jill, in terms of your goals that you presented to the board, where did you draw those goals from?
So we have a strategic plan that, um, by nature of it is a 2017 to 2022 strategic plan that has five overarching goals. In the last few years, because of the demand of the state LCAP, the superintendent's goals were aligned, they, they weren't in conflict with the strategic plan, but the LCAP perhaps took precedence over going back into the strategic plan in a regular or annual fashion to think about the metrics associated with the strategic plan. Back to your question, Dr. Williams. So when I thought about my goals.
I asked that for a reason, Jill, because that's precisely what Chris did. He drew his goals from the strategic goals and he shared those with us for, as part of his performance for that year. So Jill, you're doing exactly the same thing that Chris did.
So let's check in right quick. What did you all write down? So I asked you to write down goals. Let's, uh, let's, uh, Felton, you wanna go first? Uh, what, what did you write down for the goals?
I have mine from the district's strategic goals, so they're all here.
So what did, so what did you write down?
Yeah, goal one is ensure equitable opportunities for every student, goal one. Goal two, provide a safe, welcoming, respectful, and rigorous learning environment for every member of the school community. Goal three, promote academic growth for every student. Goal four, establish college and career readiness for every student. Goal five, support effective communication throughout the district.
All right. Who's next? What did you write down? What are the goals? Yeah?
I, I had the same ones, not in that order. Um, I had goals around communication and I didn't have the, I didn't have our strategic plan in front of me, so I didn't have the timeframe. Um, uh, communications goal, shared governance goal, uh, um, college readiness and high school graduation goal. Excuse me. Uh, I had a specific one around the three sub, the three population groups in the LCAP. So I had, and again, without the precise wording, goals for our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, our English learners, and our foster.
Okay.
Students. And then I had all of them encompassed by, um, the equity lens.
All right. Uh, who else? Uh, what did you write down as the goals?
I wrote around the same areas as well. I wrote more specifics, and I think this is where, um, the LCAP comes into play and, and needing the specific work around, uh, our subgroups and achievement gap work in terms of closing it, uh, our re-designated language learners, increasing engagement, clear communication, uh, decrease suspension, chronic absenteeism, truancy, um, all in service to that.
Okay. Who else?
Well, I, I included more recent things, so maybe I'm too focused on what's happening in the midst of the pandemic. But, um, I wrote down goals, uh, goals regarding equity as far as providing the materials for technology, Chromebooks, hotspots, that type of thing, so that we're reaching all of our students, so all of our students have, uh, equal opportunities as far as their access to the online instruction. And that's in addition to what we've been talking about. And that we have adopted a plan for the safe return of students, once we're allowed to bring students back. So we've, uh, we have a plan in place as far as what the classrooms will look like, how, you know, how they'll be disinfected, that we will provide PPE for our, our staff, um, those types of, uh, parameters for the safe return of students. And that was in addition to the other goals that we have.
All right. Uh, who's next? What'd you write down for goals?
Number one, safe and clean schools.
Uh, microphone.
Safe and clean schools, number one. Measurable student achievement growth every year, number two. Staff development, number three.
All right. Uh, Jill, I think your last one, what'd you write down for goals?
So I am thinking about the board's goals and went back to the five strategic plan goals.
Okay. So, so what did you put down?
Pardon me?
So what did you put down?
I wrote down the, the areas of the strategic plan, as Felton recited them.
Got it. So what did you all just hear?
Yeah, a combination of things, uh, AJ. Uh, in terms of the, the, the goals that are adopted by the district, uh, obviously, uh, the strategic plan goes for the district from 2017 to 2022 is not universally understood.
Yeah, so, so one thing, so one thing you just heard is that, uh, a core idea is not universally understood. Got it. What else? What did you just hear?
I heard the need for us to revisit this on a regular basis.
Who else? What did you just hear? You heard six people describe goals. Two of them were literally identical, the rest of them were all quite different. Uh, who else? What did you hear?
Let me add one thing about the strategic plan. In the overarching way that the goals are stated, they, they don't have the metrics associated with them, so they are overarching areas or goals.
Yeah, I agree with Jill. I heard a lot of objectives as well, but as, the goals are overarching, but we have a number of objectives under each goal that gets to some of the things that the board members were respa, were responding to.
Uh, anyone else? What did you notice as board members were sharing, uh, their understanding of what the goals are? Anyone else? What'd you notice? All right. What do you think is the effect on the board's effectiveness based on what she just noticed? What impact do the varied answers just provided have on the board's ability to be effective?
Well, it feels to me that we could be more focused, that our own, um, goals and purpose can be in better alignment.
Yeah, there, there's impacts on focus, there's impact on alignment, absolutely. What is the effect of?
AJ, AJ, um.
Yeah, Felton?
The goals represent the focus of the district, and these are goals that are shared with the community. And so the commi, these are what we communicate to everybody about us. And they reflect where we're trying to go and how we're trying to get there. So when people ask us what our performance metrics are, this is what we refer to. This is our bottom line, and it has to be understood.
So what's the effect of?
This is the house that we built.
So what is the effect of when you, when board members go out to communicate the goals? What's the effect if the board members aren't actually communicating the same thing?
That's what I was trying to explain, AJ, basically, uh, in that response.
Yeah.
In terms of this being our framework, this is what we communicate out to everybody in that this is what we have to be able to, uh, uh, to, um, communicate.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, what's the effect when that doesn't happen? So if I sent the five of you board members out to five different parts of the district and said, hey, share the goals, um, and if somebody was at all five of those meetings, would they have heard the exact same thing?
Publicly gives the impression that we're not all on the same page about our goals.
Yeah.
AJ, just being frank.
Yeah, th, th, and this is the conversation I'm trying to get to. Like, it, it's not helpful to tiptoe around reality. What's helpful is to confront it. What is the effect of what you just saw? Anyone else? So one effect is it can give the impression that we're not all on the same page. Anyone else?
I think we all are on the same page. A phrase that we've used since 205, 2005 is we want the personal and intellectual success of, of every student.
You all want out of the net, yes.
I mean, that's something, it's, it's a mantra that we, is ingrained in us. The personal and intellectual success of every student.
All of you want out of the net, yes. I think you are clear on that. But everyone wanting out of the net doesn't actually get you out of the net. Like, you actually do have to swim in the same direction.
Well, I think it reflects that our conversations get bogged, no, I won't say bogged down. Um, that we have a lot of conversations about the strategy pieces, um, and fewer conversations about the overarching outcomes as related to the goals. By the nature of either how agendas are structured, what reports are given in what capacity, that either give us this kind of minutia information as opposed to taking that information and relating it always back to the larger goal. And that we, I am wanting us to always hear those reports and those minutia, but in the context of how they serve the larger goal. That you just told us all of these things, and here's the outcome that we're, we're looking for, that there needs to be a connection of the specifics more often to the larger goal outwardly. Um, so that it doesn't become about the minutia, it becomes about the outward conversation of the outcomes, if that makes sense.
I, I agree with what you're saying, and it feels to me that we do a really good job with the outputs, because with our staff reports and everything, we're always kept up to date on the work that's happening, the work that's taking place within the district. But I don't feel that we've put the effort into the outcome part. Um, and, and Dr. Williams, when you talk about, um, you know, putting together that strategic plan or, or developing those goals back before, um, myself, Megan, Juan, we're on the board, that's a long time ago. And it, it feels like we need to revisit this process, not as a result of, uh, something that's happened, not as a result of a, a board that is not, um, uh, yeah, functional, you know, not as a result of an adversarial board, but actually, um, for the purpose of refining the work that we do and ensuring that we're staying in our lanes, really, that we are focused on the, the work of the district and that we are focused on student outcomes. So I'd like to see us spend more energy on the outcomes and, and let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater and give up on the outputs, but we need to, um, see that higher, um, purpose of us being a board. And we need to come up with, maybe come up with our own goals or, or work with our superintendent more closely and focus on the outcomes as well as paying attention to those outputs that let us know how we're doing on the outcomes.
Diana is precisely right, and I noticed that Jill has proposed that we revisit the strategic goals process, uh, uh, starting fairly soon so that we get a chance to review it, review everything in total and reshape the strategic framework for the district. But let me just go, uh, look at just one quick, uh, objective under goal one. Ensure equitable opportunities for every student. One of the goals, one of the objectives under that goal, provide high-quality academic programs from preschool to high school that meets the needs of every student, accelerates the closing of the achievement gap. Chris would look at that and take something out of that and basically out of these goals and share those with us as part of his academic work for the year. And we would take that and add to it or detract from it and give it back to him, and then he would give that to his staff in terms of their perfor, their work for the year. And at the end of the year, he would give it back to us to evaluate with evidence, with evidence of his work. And so that's how we were able to move the strategic goal process forward. And as Jill said, the, um, uh, any, anything that came into the district that we had to deal with would come under the reference of these goals, so that these goals would not be supplanted, but they would serve to continue to be what guided our work going forward and gave us the ability to measure what we've done. And anybody on the outside looking at us as an organization would be able to say we were able to, to meet our goals or we were not.
We're going to transition. My observation is that as a five-member governing body, uh, that you are not, in fact, in alignment to the degree that you could be. Um, and that every kind of degree of non-alignment, like if we think, we, we all wanna be moving in this direction, like every degree of non-alignment, you know, if we're five degrees not aligned, 10 degrees, 15, you know, 45 degrees not aligned, like every degree of non-alignment has an impact on the organization's ability, uh, to really accomplish what it is that you, that you want. And so much of our work then has to begin diagnosing where are the areas where the alignment isn't perfect, where it's not all going the exact same, but maybe it's three degrees off, four degrees, five, eight degrees off. Maybe there are areas where it's 45, where we're really in perpendicularity here. I, I don't suspect that's the case. I suspect, you know, it's more in this area of non-alignment. And so our task then becomes twofold. One, how can we diagnose areas of non-alignment among the board? And then two, how can we come up with tangible steps, next steps for what are we gonna do over the next 12 months to cause alignment in board behavior that gives the board access to really creating the type of outcomes you want for students? Um, and so that's what most of, that's, that's what our time, for the, the rest of our time today is really gonna be invested in, is how do we diagnose non-alignment in board behavior? And then how do we create next steps that cause, uh, greater alignment in board behavior? With the belief that this increase in alignment, this increase in coherence, uh, and how the five of you behave as individuals actually creates the context for the, the district being able to move with greater alacrity in the direction that you want, to really accomplish of the objectives you want for students. Uh, and so, uh, this is good news, because every time the coach replays a video and, and diagnoses an area of non-alignment, that's an opportunity to set their team up to win. Not watching the video doesn't help. You know, or pretending that, uh, I didn't see what I saw in the video doesn't help. The effective coach replays a video, identifies opportunities, and then puts in place a plan for how do we capitalize on the opportunities we saw? And so that's all we're doing here. Um, I submit to you, at times it is uncomfortable. Uh, discomfort is, that's, just consider that that's where the growth is at. Uh, there's, I, as I experienced some of our discomfort, that inside of that discomfort are opportunities for growth, opportunities to get stronger and better, to win more games on behalf of our students as a result of having replayed the video. Uh, so that's what we'll do with the rest of our time. This is just kind of lay the groundwork for that. What I suspect, it will be a full 12 months or some odd months from now before the board finally puts to rest this idea of what are our. finally puts to rest this idea of what are our goals over the next five-year period going to look like. What makes those work, though, won't be writing them down then. What will make those work is changing board behaviors right now in whatever way is necessary to create alignment now, so that you bring new goals in the future into a board that is aligned in its behaviors in the present. That's the work that we're going to focus on. It's like, what are the ways that we can create alignment and board behavior now, so that as we do answer these larger questions through conversations with our community and superintendent and so on and so forth around what are long-term vision and values, that those questions get answered in the context of a board that is aligned, that all of you understand what are the behaviors that we've agreed to, what are the ways of operation that we're all committed to, and that we've had time to practice and hone and get really exceptional at that? And then we bring our community's vision and values into that reinvigorated board. That is the intention for the rest of our time together today, and frankly, for the rest of our time together, in so much as you ever want to see us again after this round of discomfort that we are guaranteeing you. That's the work that is before us over the next 12 months. How long would you like for a break? Five, 10, or 15? It is seven after, or, I'm sorry, three till, so we'll see you back at seven after, or do you want to round up to 10 after? All right, see you back at 10 after. Welcome back. So, we promised that we'd be spending time replaying the video. One way of replaying the video that we'll do for the first time now in just a really light way, but know that there's a more rigorous way that we'll do this later on. But just to get you started into the work, is to reflect on inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Inputs, outputs, and outcomes. When in the cycle do we normally know about inputs? At the beginning. When do we normally know about outcomes? Outcomes? At the end. When do we normally know about outputs?
In the middle.
In the middle. Inputs are generally the resources and the activities that are applied and generally knowable at the beginning of the process. The outcomes are generally the results at the end of the process, and the outputs are the measurements knowable in the middle of the process that give us some insight into the quality of implementation of the inputs, and in some cases, give us some ideas about the likelihood of achieving the outcome. Those progress measures, that data in the middle, those are your outputs. So what we've put in front of you is a recent set of minutes from a recent board meeting. This one appears to have been held on October 7th. So what we're going to do is we're just going to walk through each item, and we're just going to identify, is this item focused on inputs, outputs, or outcomes? If it's focused on outcomes, we'll figure out is it focused on student outcomes or adult outcomes? But we're just going to go through and code this thing really fast. So, and if you can't figure out which one it is, then it's probably an input, or you could just, you know, say other. So, call to order. How much time do you all think you spent on that?
Seconds.
Seconds? Like, maybe three seconds? Got it. Input, output, or outcome, or other? Say what? Other? Anybody else? Thoughts? Inputs, outputs, outcomes? Input? Okay. It sounds like it's either input or other, three seconds, got it. Let's see. Announce the board will be considering item 11, this is listed on closed. Let's see. Having completed closed session, call the session meeting to order, so those first three items all sounds like that, really quick. So then let's jump down, report of closed session. President Craig reported, governing board had been meeting in closed session regarding matters, list on today's closed agenda, and wish to announce that no reportable actions were taken. So that item, how long did that take? So so far, we're about maybe 15 seconds into the meeting. So we're less than a minute into the meeting. These first four items, call to order, closed session, call to order, report of closed session, inputs, outputs, or outcomes? These all feel procedural, other? Any other thoughts?
For a report of closed session, AJ, I would say because there wasn't anything, but that could sometimes be an outcome or output, depending on what we report on the closed session.
You're saying in this particular case it wasn't, but potentially it could be?
Correct.
Got it. So how would you code it in this situation?
I would say input.
And I don't know what your PhD work was in, but if you're getting flashbacks from having to code documents, I apologize. All right, so we've got, so we're 30 seconds in, it's all sounds like other or possibly inputs. Great. Public hearing. There's none here, so we'll just keep moving. So the next is call for agenda items, adoption of agenda. Input, output, or outcome? Remember to use your mics. Call for agenda items, adoption of agenda. Inputs, is this, in that moment, is the board focusing on inputs, outputs, or outcomes? Or other?
Well, for me, I think we're focused on inputs, because the agenda has all of the mechanisms by which we're going to do things. So whether it's the instruction report, contracts, so it's a recognition that we're going to talk about all of the inputs and all of the things that are relevant, and in this case, minus item 34 of a purchasing and contract report.
All right, so you're thinking inputs, the agenda items, adoption of agendas, inputs? I can go for that. How much time do you think we spent on that?
Well, we actually pulled an item, so that probably took an extra 30 seconds. We don't usually have times where items are pooled, but there, I think I can remember one time where we had more than a 25, 30-second conversation about the agenda.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard for us to change the order.
Thank you, Chris. Sometimes we have conversations about changing the order of the agenda as posted, amending the agenda. I mean, that's where we usually have those conversations.
Gotcha. All right, so so far, we're about 60 seconds in, and it's all other, or 30 seconds of other, 30 seconds of input, somewhere in there. That moves to approval of minutes. It was moved to approve the minutes. Is that an input, output, or outcome?
An output.
Output. Why do you say an output?
Just the result.
Let's see. Motion carried, it was unanimous. How long did that take?
At that meeting, were we all present, were some of us via Zoom? We do roll call if not all of us are present, so it takes longer.
Yeah, two of us.
Okay. So it takes slightly longer for the roll call.
So maybe 10 seconds instead of five. All right, communications, there was none. All right, hearing of public testimony. All right, so hearing of public testimony, listed on here twice, so the first one, ask if there's anyone present, comment on items listed on the agenda, and it looks like there was one. Input, output, or outcome?
Public testimony is input.
Sound, okay. How much time did you spend on that?
We spent 30 minutes?
We allotted 30 minutes. If there was only one speaker, then they had three minutes to speak.
So it's three minutes, so input, three minutes. All right, the next hearing of testimony for items not listed on the agenda. Input, output, or outcome?
Input. Individual is allowed three minutes.
All right, so input again, 15 minutes? All right. Staff report. Input, output, or outcome? Why output?
This particular staff report was on the update of reopening of schools, so it was kind of telling us where we are mid-process in terms of COVID closure.
All right, so outputs, when we get to outputs and outcomes, let's get even more precise. Are these student outputs or adult outputs?
It's both, because there's a component in the presentation that relates to staff, and there's also a component in the presentation that relates to student achievement and outcomes and decisions.
All right, so which one describes what students are doing? You said there's some of it that is student outputs, that's what students are doing, as opposed to adult outputs, what adults are doing. So which item in here describes what students are doing?
Dr. Simon, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I say Dr. Simon's portion, which is the second part, was talking about students with disabilities and phasing in of students, and what that would look like. So that was specific to students.
No, that doesn't sound like, that sounds like the adults making decisions about what students will be doing.
That's true.
I see. Which of these describes what students are actually doing? Student outputs as opposed to adult outputs?
So I would say the update on the students that are currently at the school sites would be student outputs. How many students we have at the school sites.
Okay, so you're saying student participation in, in school?
Yes.
You'd put that down as a student output rather than adult output?
Yes.
Okay, anything else in here? Student output versus adult output? All right, so how much time was spent on the staff report? Total time, ballpark?
It was significant.
I would just say 15 minutes?
It was a 15 to 20-minute presentation, and then discussion.
Okay, let's, you know, if we call it 20 minutes, how much of that was spent on adult outputs? How much of that was spent on student outputs?
I think it was probably like a 90-10, 90 adult, maybe 10 for students.
Okay. Any folks that sound, sound about right? All right, then maybe call it 13-two, oh, no, if we're doing, you know, 20 minutes, call it an 18-two split. You know, 18 minutes on adult outputs, two minutes on student outputs. Student outputs, two minutes, all right. Now that takes us to personnel. Input, output, or outcome? Why output?
It's a snapshot.
It's a snapshot of what's happening with personnel at one given time. So it's not the beginning, it's not the end.
Well, it's an output, because it's the result of what happened.
Okay. Adult, so would you describe as an adult output or student output?
Adult.
Why adult?
It's all in relation to staff and personnel.
Got it. One thing that I would, I think you could put this down as an input or an output. I think adult output is fair. I generally argue pretty much anything the board is voting on represents, not the beginning of staff work, but definitely represents the beginning of the process from the board's perspective, that this is now officially started. So everything leading up to that was, we're planning to do this, but we don't actually have permission to do this yet. And so in that regard, I often think of votes of the board as beginning the time, the clock on that particular item. Because obviously, if you vote it down, then it literally never starts. And so I would hear some, I've heard some people refer to an item like that as an input. So we have now said, here is something we're going to do in our district that we previously had not done. But I also, but if you're looking at, from the administration's perspective, this is the middle of their process, and so I can see it being an adult output. So you have to decide for yourself, you know, do we want to capture that as an input from the board's perspective or an output from the staff's perspective? Questions on that?
So are you asking us to decide amongst?
Yeah. Ideally, you all would code the meeting the same way. So would you all define this as, are you going to define this from board perspective or from, from staff perspective? If you're doing it from the board perspective, which is how I normally think of these things, then it's more of an input. If you're doing it from staff perspective, then it's more of an output. Question is, which way are you going to do this? Because then this, because we just want to be consistent throughout the rest of the document, that's all.
Does anybody have any ideas on that? I'm leaning towards output, because the report is generated by staff. Does anybody else have ideas, or?
Yeah, I guess I would, I would think about if our, if part of our purpose here in going through whether these are inputs, outputs, is to dedicate more of our time to outcomes and outputs versus input, then I would say to look at it from the perspective of staff as an input. But if, I guess it, is that the intent here, AJ, to get a better sense of what are outcomes, so that we can focus more time and energy to those things?
You are a step ahead of the process.
Yeah.
Stop being precocious. So I was just wondering, how are you all coding the board voting? Are you coding it from the board's perspective or from the staff's perspective? Megan, you ever thought of this?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask you to repeat what you said about.
Do you want to code, so the main question is, do you want to code things from the board's perspective, or do you want to code things from the staff's perspective?
Well, my initial reaction is, we're the board, so we should code them from what our perspective is. We should, if this is a, if this is a meeting of the board in public, this is our business, so how do we view this particular piece that we voted on?
If that's the case, then you would code this as an input.
Correct. Okay.
All right. How much time did you spend on it?
On the personnel report?
Yes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, got it. Input, two minutes. Instruction report. Input, output, or outcome?
Input.
Input.
How much time on that?
This one was short, so we, probably a minute.
What was, somebody help me, what was, what's in the instruction report?
We'll talk about different courses that have been approved, like say, we have a new linked learning course for a particular high school in oceanography, or.
So this is the staff reporting on what they've already done based on prior board authority?
No.
No.
It's not what they've already done, but proposed additions.
Gotcha.
To the curriculum. So it's new courses that they've written, it's approval to submit grants for funding or programmatic things.
Input it is. That definitely sounds like input. Got it. Finance report A, I don't even know what's in that as a distinct from B.
It's a paying of the bills, and it's distinct from B in that my husband works for a company that has done work with some of our people in the past, so I always recuse from that.
Oh, gotcha.
So they pull those items separately, so that I don't vote.
Separately, for conflict, got it. So, so finance reports, how much time was spent on those two items, and is it input, output, or outcome? input, output, or outcome? What is the finance report, what information is the board getting in that? Is that what's already been done by staff on prior board authority, or is it requesting new authority to do something?
It's paying the bills, we've already given the authority to, money we've already approved to spend, and then they cut the check, so it's approval of those checks.
Alright, so you're approving expenditures. Alright, then, got it. Input, output, or outcome?
Well, technically, it's input until we approve it, and then it's outcome.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, I definitely put that down as input. How much time did you spend on report A and report B?
Same amount, 2 minutes.
Same deal, yeah.
Alright, so total of 2 minutes, that takes us to business report. Input, output, or outcome?
Well, it's actually the same, you know, it's input until we approve it, then it's output.
Alright, so input, how much time was spent on it? Alright. Purchasing contracts, report A, and purchasing contracts, and report B.
They're separated for the same reason.
For the same reason, got it. So we can take them all together, are those an input, output, or outcome?
Those are an input.
And how much time?
This particular meeting was probably just a minute, just 2 or 3 minutes. Sometimes there's items in the, that get discussed, because it's a full accounting of the purchasing contracts. We don't approve contracts as separate items, it's one whole report. So it could have 15, it could have 40.
In this case, it was 2 minutes.
It was 2 minutes.
Got it. Superintendent's items, none. Unfinished business, none. New business. Member Williams, approval of resolution supporting National Principals Month. Myers, looks like we've got a bunch of resolutions here. Resolutions, we've got additional members to a community, okay, so let's take the 2 resolutions first. So those resolutions, input, output, or outcome?
I think outcome.
It's an output.
Oh, I heard output and I heard outcome. So somebody justify your answer.
I think outcome because it's, it's a culmination of work. It's not the beginning of the process, it's not the middle of the process, that is the culmination of something. In this case, for the principals, it was, we are resolving to acknowledge principals for their good work. So that would be an outcome.
Alright. Anybody else have, I thought I heard another answer as well? John, you have a different answer, or are you going with, going with Diana's? Anybody at all? Alright, so if you're saying it's an outcome, is it adult outcome or student outcome?
You know, I think it's both on this one, because?
No, it's never both. Is it an adult outcome or a student outcome?
These are all outcomes, in my view.
Well, I believe it's a student outcome, because?
So does it describe what students know or are able to do?
No, but the principals support the teachers, the teachers?
Got it. So does it describe what students know or are able to do?
I don't remember the particulars of the, I don't remember the recitals in that resolution, but I believe students were mentioned in the resolution.
It's celebrating the accomplishments of principals.
Yes.
Alright, so is it adult outcome or a student outcome?
Looks like it's more adult.
Got it, adult outcome. How much time was spent on it? 3 minutes? For both resolutions? Alright, and for the second one?
I think we had some comment on the second resolution, but not much, so 4 minutes or so.
So a total of 4 minutes between the 2 of them?
That's probably, that sounds right.
Alright. That takes us down to the adding additional committee members. Input, output, or outcome?
I would say it's an outcome, it's an adult outcome.
Why an adult outcome?
It's adding members to a community engagement board to work that, that advises the staff on stu, for students with disabilities, so it's parents of students. And so this is adding members to that body that advises staff.
Okay. How much time?
A couple minutes. I think we probably acknowledged the people who have volunteered to serve on that committee.
Got it. Alright, so 2 minutes. That takes us to Personnel Commission, reappointment of Personnel Commissioner. Input, output, or outcome?
Outcome.
Members to Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Input, output, or outcome?
An output.
Surplus District Properties. Input, output, or outcome?
Maybe I'm too literal, but, maybe I'm too literal, but once something is approved, it becomes an output. That's the result.
Yeah, what I'm asking is the, how are we coding the action itself? Not the result of the action.
The action itself.
Like on a long enough timeline, every action you take eventually becomes an outcome. But I'm most curious about the action itself. Is the action itself the end of the cycle for a particular decision, which is essentially what you're saying the resolutions are? Or is it just initiating the work, which is what you're saying some of these other approvals are?
It depends on the resolution. I would say the surplus district properties is an input, because it started the process, it gave permission to, for staff to start a process.
Alright, so surplus district properties, you're saying it's an input, how much time was spent on that?
7 minutes or so, we had a report from facilities.
Alright, reappointment of Personnel Commissioner. Input, output, or outcome?
I'd say it was an input because it's starting something, but Mr. Gilishevsky has served for a long time, so it was an appointment. So it was kind of a midway point of Personnel Commission helps with hiring all classified staff to work for the district, so. But I'm willing to consider.
I'm thinking this is some artifact of state law. What's a Personnel Commissioner?
It's the, the organization within our district that hires classified employees. That takes them through the, the process of application, all the way through to hiring.
So you, as a superintendent, you don't hire?
Correct.
Good to know. Every state does things a little bit differently, this is what I love about my job.
Right, they're separate from, like, if you look at the org chart, they're separate, so they do all of the testing and?
So how do people serve on that commission?
They're appointed by the board.
So the board appoints the commission, and the board appoints the commissioner that the commission oversees?
The board appoints the commissioner at the recommendation of the committee that interviewed potential commissioners. So there's people with, representative from the board, from labor partners, interview potential commissioners. That body makes a recommendation to the board for approval.
So Jill wants to hire John Doe to be a custodian. She doesn't bring that to the board, she takes that to the commission?
John Doe would have to take the test and qualify for the position, and then go through an independent hiring process, independent of who John Doe knows at the district.
Got it.
And then it comes to this board for approval.
And then we have to approve the final.
Same thing with principals, or is that different? Got it. Alright, good to know, thank you for that. Helpful for me to understand, so I don't accidentally recommend illegal things.
That's frowned upon, I'm sure.
It is frowned upon, yes. Alright, so reappointment of Ken. Input, output, or outcome? Final answer. Juan, take us away. What's your final answer?
I'm going to change my answer now. I'm thinking because that body is already constituted, that now we're talking about outputs.
Okay.
Because we're not initiating.
And how much time? Sounds like you and Megan are on the same page on that one.
Yeah, 2, 2 minutes.
Alright.
2, 3 minutes.
Adult output or student output?
Adult.
Adult.
2 minutes. You sound so resigned, Diana.
She's catching on to this little game.
She's starting to figure out what's happening here.
Yes.
She doesn't like this game anymore.
No, that's why I kept trying to work around to the students.
There's a theme here, no students, no outcomes, it's all there.
There is, in fact, a theme. Members to Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Input, output, or outcome?
Output.
Output, adult output or student output? How much time? 1 minute, alright. Let's see. And Diana, you were spot on about Ghost of Christmas Past. You didn't know how correct you were, did you?
I was hoping I wasn't correct at all.
The gift that keeps on giving. Alright, Proposed Project at Avalon. Input, output, or outcome? Input. How much time?
That was about 5 minutes, we heard a brief report.
5 minutes, alright. Equity Policy Development Update. Input, output, or outcome?
Output.
Output? Student output or adult output?
Adult output.
How much time?
That was Dr. Brown, right?
10 minutes, was it?
Yeah, it was about 10 minutes.
10 minutes, got it. Alright. Report of Board Members. Good job. How much time was spent on reports of Board Members?
What would you say, 20 minutes, 25 minutes?
25 minutes? Alright. Input, output, or outcome?
We're giving the public input, but it's our output.
Yeah, I would say output.
Adult output.
Adult output, alright. Superintendent's Report. How much time?
Maybe 6 minutes.
6 minutes? Alright.
It might have been a little longer. I mean, not more than, I would have said 10, to be safe with the back and forth.
Alright. Inputs, outputs, outcomes?
Output.
Outputs? Okay. Adult outputs or student outputs?
Both. She's talking about parent university, adult outputs, and then specific student.
Alright, so of the 10 minutes, how would you divide it? How much was student outputs, how much was adult outputs?
I'd say half.
So 5 minutes of adult outputs, 5 minutes of student outputs?
You know, AJ, I actually see student outcome in Dr. Baker's report, right? She refers to her, she refers to the publishing that our former students are doing, she refers to what some individual students are doing. I don't know, I, see, this is a place to maybe find some student outcomes.
Alright. So if we said that 5 minutes was adult outputs, minutes is other stuff, so what would be your breakdown of student outcomes versus student outputs? With the remaining 5 minutes? As we seek desperately to try to come up with a means of describing some percentage of this meeting, it's being focused on student outcomes. By the way, bravo to the superintendent for giving us something to hope for here. Anybody going to divide this up for us? You got, you got 5 minutes to spend, Brent. How much of his outputs, how much is his outcomes?
I'd say 2 and 1/2 minutes was student outcome.
Alright, student outcomes. And then finally, announcements, and there were none.
It was only 2 and 1/2 hours.
So, congratulations, you've coded your first board meeting. Before we dive into what the data, the actual data itself, what are you taking away from this activity?
In our defense, I just want to say that, that these, these times are different. We don't have kids in our, in our classrooms, per se.
So you're not educating children right now?
During, during, but during normal ti, well, my point is, during normal times, we're more, we have more to say about the kids themselves, because there are, are more things that connect us to the kids outside of the planning and everything else that's happening, you know, due to this pandemic. I think that if we, if we went back maybe in, no? If we went back and looked at a different meeting, say, a year ago, things might be different.
So remember I promised earlier that this is the discomfort part of the process, and there's growth here? So here's what I just heard you say. Out of sight, out of mind.
I'm sorry it sounded like that, because I was, in my mind, I was thinking of our board reports, and our board reports usually are more focused on students as far as event-related things. For example, at the elementary school level, there might be a spelling bee, or a, you know, a play, or something of that nature. There's reading opportunities where we're invited to read in a classroom, and so those are the kinds of things that we typically report on, and so that's what I'm thinking in my mind about, we generally have a closer relationship with the students when they're in classrooms and not at home.
Is there learning taking place in the district right now?
Yes, yes.
Alright. So anytime that's the case, an absence of a focus on student outcomes is a willful choice. So it's actually possible that you could, in fact, be really digging into what's happening, you know, with our students. What I'm saying is, we have a norm for how we do that. It's actually not focused on our, on how students are performing relative to the board's expectations, as much it is focused on what are different activities that the students are doing. And that's, and if that has served you well, then that serves you well, but in a moment when those activities aren't available, it sounds like the pattern that you all defaulted into is not seeking out other ways of really being in students' world. Your normal way has been taken away from you, and so instead of saying, then we'll find another way, and you've just filled in the space with other adult stuff. That's, that's what it feels like here. Again, based on just this one board meeting. So I think that is just something to reflect on. It's not about if it's right or wrong, or good or bad, it's just, I reflect on, we normally have other stuff in here. Those things are taken away, what did we backfill it with? What you, it appears like from this, you backfilled it with is a bunch of adult outputs and inputs. But I, the challenge I'd offer is that you could backfill that with other things that really describe how our students do it. It would be harder, it'd be harder, given the circumstances, but you could do it.
And for me, I think this is, and I had this conversation with Dr. Baker, when she was asking our ideas and suggestions as we were having those getting-to-know-you things, of, I see an opportunity in our agenda is to do more of that student outcome, more to do more of that student outcome work that we've done, sometimes in other places, sometimes in closed session. That how we code those matter and making sure that they're not put in closed session if they're, if they're conversations we need to be having in the public that might be uncomfortable. Like, making sure that we're doing all of those things to follow the legal things necessary for closed session. But being mindful that some of those conversations, that we're having those hard student outcome conversations in public. That there is an opportunity to, to put more things in and change up the agenda. Again, the agenda has always been the agenda as long as I've known the agenda. I don't always know the whys of how things were put in there. So I'm open to looking at the why things are clumped and categorized the way they are to make sure that we are having the appropriate conversations in public.
Yeah, my reflections would be the way that our agenda is organized allows us really only two spaces on our agenda as it sits to focus on the student outcome piece, and one is during the staff report piece, and the other is during, if there are any policies or resolutions that we're taking action on.
That's how it's structured today.
That's how it's structured today.
Yeah.
What, in the last two months has occurred, and, and I wouldn't have remembered unless I saw the video here.
Yeah.
AJ, is that we spent all of September in its entirety on student outcomes vis-à-vis our distance learning plan.
So is the distance learning plan talking about what the adults plan to do to support distance learning? Or the student learning results of your current distance learning plan?
Output, as an output, not as an outcome.
Okay. Adult output or student output?
Combination.
So, so there was data about how students are currently performing in your distance learning?
Well, not performing, but did they have access to, for instance, technology, right, what, how platforms were being navigated by students?
So login, login data. Got it. Yeah, so login data I would describe as a student output.
Yes.
Whether or not the system exists and whether or not they have access to it, I'd describe as an adult output.
So we talked about student engagement, lost learning, things like that, right, and attendance. We spent, I mean, I don't want to say 100% of our time, but the bulk of our time in Sep, in September, listening to public comment about that, hearing staff present about that, and then us ultimately adopting the plan.
All right, so that sounds similar to this, that doesn't actually sound heavily focused on student outcomes as much as it sounds focused on adult input and a lot of adult outputs and a little bit of student outputs as well.
Right, and I'm using that as evidence too. That was all under staff reporting. That, that's why I highlighted that, right, because we, we, whether we thought it or not, the bulk of our time and energy was still on a staff presentation that then we engaged in conversation and listened to public comment on.
Yeah.
And you asked the question of, you know, what would it look like a year ago? Or we talk about what would it look like a year ago? You know, being really honest of, even when we weren't dealing with COVID, which we all know has changed how we, even if we were, when we're doing regular assessments, how we report back on those things. Did we take the opportunity a year ago, or two years ago, or five years ago, were we having those outcome conversations? I don't know. I, I would venture to guess that we, if we coded minutes from two years ago, and now I'm gonna be kind of wonky and I'm gonna go back and look, because that's what I do. Was there an opportunity to do more conversation around outcome than, than we did? And yeah, completely, totally.
It probably won't surprise you, this is an issue I've been watching somewhat closely. What I've largely found is the percentages have shifted, but not radically. Boards who are spending half of their time focused on student outcomes probably are now only spending 35 to 40% of their time focused on student outcomes. Boards who are spending .008% of their time focused on student outcomes today were probably not spending significantly much more than .008% of their time focused on. Like, this meeting, from what I can tell, lasted 290 minutes. Of that, you all coded 2.5 of those minutes as being focused on student outcomes. What, I, I have not found the percentages to have jumped radically. Boards that were focused, how boards were focused before is very reflective of how boards are focused today. That is the general norm I'm seeing across the country. And as it turns out, most boards have never been focused on student outcomes. And so COVID is actually nothing new for them. It's just a different set of adult inputs and adult outputs that they're paying attention to rather than the adult output, inputs and outputs they were paying attention to.
I will say that, that that is probably true if I were to code board meeting minutes. If I were to court, to, to code board workshop minutes, that that would be different. That we take those three times a year where it's a day and a half, where we do, do deep dives, hour-and-a-half-long presentations on very specific data. So we do have those opportunities, but they don't happen always in the context of a standard board meeting. They happen in those set-aside meetings of board workshops.
And you said those happen three times a year?
Three times a year.
Got it.
And there's hours sometimes on a particular day regarding the specifics around achievement gaps and outcomes and subgroups and I think the last time we did it.
That's correct, Megan, and these are two-day workshops, once every three months.
And, and I would say half of, half to three-quarters of those, depending if I were to go back and look at agendas, are specific to where are we at this point in time? If it's our November workshop, we're talking about, well, the August workshop, we'll talk about all the, at year-end data from the year before. Broken out by grade level, demographic. All of those test scores and, and outcomes. November would tend to be more poignant time of we're in one trimester. How are things looking for elementary ELA across the board? So there are specific deep dives into data. I will not say that they're 100% spent on those workshops, but that there are set-aside times that are not in the context of a regular board meeting that we do that work.
Other reflections. What are you taking away from this activity? You've coded one of your board meetings, inputs, outputs, outcomes, student versus adult. Who else? What are you taking away from this?
I think our meetings need to reflect the focus we have on the students. We know, we, that the work is being done, but the meetings don't reflect that.
Why would it matter whether or not the meetings reflect that? Why would that matter? Who cares?
Well, this is, this is the public showing of the work that we do. So this is where, minus a one-on-one conversation or a conversation with a group, someone can point to the evidence that we are concerned about student outcomes. If they look at that and say, I listened to a whole meeting and they didn't talk at all about outcomes, how do I know that they're actually focused on them?
Why does it matter how the board spends its time? Anyone else? Why, who cares? The board spend, does it even matter how the board spends its time?
Are you talking about times at, at the meeting itself?
I'm talking about how the board spends its time.
Maybe I'm, I'm afield, but there's a strong line in my mind between management and policy. Boards are responsible for policy, if I have it correctly.
And monitoring progress.
And if we wanted to bring more student instructional reports into our meetings, it seems to me we should call upon the assistant superintendents in charge of elementary, middle school, and high school to do that. They have the wherewithal to let us know where we stand in terms of student achievement.
How many employees do you all have?
Excuse me?
How many, in California, how many employees, how many employees does the board superv, board evaluate?
I didn't understand your question.
How many employees does the board evaluate? It's, it's different, that answer's different in different states. Like, in Ohio, it's three, oddly enough. Okay, so here's one. So I, so yes, if you wanted to change your agenda, I recommend that you change that in partnership with your one employee. If she wants to include other people, I'd leave that up to her. But if you want to change your agenda, yeah, I, I think you could sit down with your employee and make decisions about what, what, how we'd want to spend our ti, if we were going to spend it differently, how we might spend it instead. So I asked a question earlier. And the question earlier was, how can you measure whether or not the board is being effective? In the context of this conversation, let me ask that question again. How could you measure whether or not the board's being effective? What's, what's a way of measuring whether or not the board is being effective?
Student outcomes.
So one way is, do you actually get the results for students? Certainly. In the context of this conversation that we're, that we're in the middle of having, what's another way that you could measure whether or not the board's being effective? The outcome is information at the end of the cycle.
How much time we're spending on items during our time that are focused on student outcomes?
Yeah, you all can make a judgment call about how do we actually want to spend our time? And then are we behaving consistent with how we said we intend to behave? But you all could proactively say, here's what we, here is our ideal set of board behaviors. And then you could measure, how close are we to that ideal? That is a way that you could evaluate the board's effectiveness. You could first declare, here's what we say is ideal board behavior. And then you could measure, how are we doing relative to that ideal? That's, that is a way that you could measure board effectiveness. Yeah. Any other reflections as you're going through this? And I'll, I'll pick on Jill here in a second, so, you know, be lining up your interesting commentary. Brent, reflections? What are your thoughts, takeaway from this conversation so far?
Yeah, I don't want the board to beat themselves up too much. I'm gonna give them, more credit than they're giving themselves credit for in two areas. Number one, the public comment is a place that is largely focused on student outcomes, although it's anecdotal, right? You have parents and children who are saying, this is how your programs are affecting me. This is how I'm performing, excelling, suffering, or fill in the verb on that. And so a significant amount of your public comment is focused on student outcomes. But in addition to that, in California, an employee has a right to be evaluated in private, in closed session. And so you've only coded the open session of the board meeting. The closed session of the board meeting always has a component of evaluating the superintendent. And, and significant portions of that, of course, include how the superintendent is doing with respect to outcomes relative to board goals.
Brent is a very kind human. I'm going to largely encourage you to ignore everything you just heard. And, and here's why. The, the closed, I think he's absolutely right on the closed section. The problem is, to his point, nobody sees that. So if we're holding up the board meetings, that the public-facing part of board meetings is part of how a board builds culture, part of how a board conveys vision and values and their allegiance to it, your closed sessions don't help you with that at all. It's, I think he's right, there, there is likely to be more focus there. But is that a way that you can build culture? No, because people don't see it. The other part of it, this, you know, this idea that the public comments convey some of that, I only would give yourselves credit for that if you designed public comments to actually accomplish that. My suspicion is, what happens is, you actually have no voice in what public is showing up and commenting. So that's not actually the board's behavior that is driving a focus. That may in fact be a community behavior that's driving a focus. That's valuable, but that doesn't say anything about what, what the board's leadership is bringing to the table. So if you wanted to, though, you could intentionally say, hey, we have this particular goal. It's around bridging, you know, these gaps in performance for our students who are two or more years behind. We want to see them catch up. And we are intentionally reaching out to parents and students who are in that position, who want to share with the board. In that moment, then you'd actually be driving public comment that is expl, and you could carve out a section of your agenda, separate from your normal public comment agenda, that is just specifically, we're trying to hear from folks, you know, who are in this. So you could do that, but only if you did that, and I'm not saying I recommend it. I'm just saying, if you wanted it to be a reflection of the board's leadership, that there was a conversation about student outcomes as a result of public comment, then you'd actually need to cause that to happen. It happening by happenstance, I absolutely would never give the board credit for, because it's not actually a reflection of your leadership. It's a reflection of community leadership, which is valuable, but not a reflection of your leadership. By the way, Brent is probably the most loving and wonderful human I've run across in the last six-month period.
I, I agree with that. I think, I think we all agree with that. We know, we know how fortunate we are to have him. So what I hear you saying is that we have to be more intentional with our design.
Yeah.
With the design of the agenda and the design of what, what we allow the public to see of our work. And so far, we have been doing really great work in closed session that's not reflected in the agenda, it's not reflected in the open session meetings. And we need to change that around.
So what I'm encouraging you to do is be thoughtful about, what is it that we want? How do we want to put our vision and values on display? Like, what do we want to do that shows our allegiance to all swimming in the same direction? And particularly, the direction that we want other people swimming in as well. Because, you know, as Monica described earlier, what happens in the boardroom echoes in the classroom. There, there are cultural norms that exist. I think the example she gave was, as the board demonstrates a focus and as the board demonstrates openness to being reflective, then you actually give permission to your staff to be focused and permission to your staff to be self-reflective. Right now, this document, as you have coded it, tells your staff what you most want them to be focused on. Whether you intended it to or not, that is the sum effect of a board meeting. I, none of my stories are made up. They're all true stories. The names are changed to protect the guilty. One of my favorite stories to this effect is, I was working with a board and, and I can show you the video, obviously I won't, but I can show you the video. I may show you the video. Where, at the culmination of a 45-minute, you know, tirade on the part of multiple board members, one of the board members pounds his fist on the dais and says, I am philosophically opposed to non-yellow school buses. This was the culminating, the crescendo of this 45-minute debate that was taking place among board members on the color, the appropriate yellow of school buses. So, that's not even where, that's just where the fun begins. We haven't gotten to the interesting part of the story. So after this board meeting is over, what are some of the things that you think happened in the next two weeks between that board meeting and the subsequent board meeting? What are some of the things you think happened? Superintendent, you're welcome to play ball. Anybody, what, what are some, what are some activities you think occurred between that board meeting and the next school board meeting?
It sounds to me like one of the board members interfered with the, with either the purchase of new buses or, or something to that effect.
All right, so board members continued to express their opinions on the color of buses. What else do you think happened in the intervening time?
Staff ran around and spent a lot of time trying to think about what the implementation of that philosophy would have to look like.
Staff spent a ton of time researching the different colors of buses, evaluating the cost-effectiveness, the security rating of, you know, this Pantone versus that Pantone of color, of bus. What else do you think happened in between those two board meetings?
Solicited or not, community members weighed in.
Oh!
And so there were some parent meetings that were.
The local, the local newspaper, they put out a survey. The teachers' union, they put out a survey. Everybody was getting in on what the color of the school buses should be. Any other activities? And sadly, all of you are spot on so far. Your ability to predict this is really unfortunate.
Businesses weighed in on how they could actually produce the new colors.
People showed up and was like, hey, our non-yellow paint is better than their non-yellow paint. People showed up and was like, hey, our non-yellow paint is better than their non-yellow paint. Absolutely, you get this whole conversation. Two weeks later, the superintendent and staff have spent untold hours, teachers' union has spent all kinds of hours, they've, they've got an opinion, people practically have non-yellow signs, you know, you know, what's going on. They were very fired up about this, it was a major issue with the union. At the next board meeting, guess what happened to the board meeting? What do they spend their time on at the next board meeting? The coloration of buses is brought up again, the superintendent, she's doing her job, she, her and her team present on all this stuff. At the end of the meeting, guess what action the board took?
They have yellow school buses.
They, they took no action whatsoever. What is the moral of the story?
Don't judge a bus by its cover.
What's the moral of the story?
Stick to student outputs.
More specifically, what the board focuses on gives rise to what the community and the staff are going to focus on as well.
Ajay, I'm intrigued though, and I've been trying to turn over in my mind and listen at the same time. I think we all would be more intent on bringing the focus on good things that are happening in our schools instruction-wise into our board meetings. And I'm not sure just exactly how we do that. For example, as I mentioned earlier, we could bring into each meeting our area superintendents to give us a report on where do we stand at the elementary, the middle school, the high school level.
I hear you wrestling with, what would it look like? And that is the perfect thing to be wrestling with. Don't get married to anything yet.
No, no.
You can date some ideas, but don't, don't put a ring on it yet. But I hear you wrestling with, what would it look like? Like, what, what are the behavior changes that the board would have to make in order to really facilitate that? And that's exactly the thing to be wrestling with. We're not there yet, but don't worry, we won't leave you in no man's land. We'll, we'll give you a guide. But that's exactly the thing to be wrestling with, is if I wanted to cause a greater level of coherence as a result of board member behavior, what would that look like? And that's exactly the question you should be asking. We'll, we'll get to answering it after we've fed you. But that is absolutely the question to be wrestling with right now. So you're right where you need to be.
The, the other part of that, building on your, what you're wrestling with, I guess, John?
Yeah.
That also sets cultural norms for incoming board members, rather than, I'll speak for myself, just kind of assuming certain things, and, and I'll be very specific. What is our board process for getting items on an agenda?
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
Basic, but fundamental to get to what, what this looks like, right?
Basic behaviors and basic norms have brought you to this. If you want something else here, you're going to have to change your norms of behavior. In particular, you're going to have to write down what they are to begin with, to get clear about this, because otherwise, this will happen on autopilot. If you want something else in board behavior, you're going to have to design something else in board behavior. Absolutely.
Well, and I think that's the thing that, it's, it's the reason we asked you to come here, is the recognition that, again, in this time of transition, some of us, even the longest, well, who will be the longest-term members, don't have clarity on how things came to be.
Yeah.
And to be perfectly frank, when asked or questioning, can we do it different, is, well, this is how we've done it. And, and there has been that resting on tradition and resting on, it has served us well in the past, therefore it works, absent of something disruptive that asks for a change. So I think doing this proactively to say, at this point in time, as we move forward and onboard new people, while parts of this have served us somewhat well, point eight percent well, apparently, that there's room to make changes that aren't being made to be disruptive or to say it hasn't been good in the past, but how can we be more intentional moving forward? And how do we design that thing? And so I'm grateful for the conversation and the way you've brought us here to say, there have been some really good things. But there's an opportunity to be more intentional, and I'm looking forward to being fed and talking after.
Ajay, another thought might be, when it comes time for board reports, it's always been my impression, the public is not too much concerned about what we're doing. Maybe we should reflect more on what's happening at our schools in terms of instruction and student achievement and attendance and suspensions and dropouts. And then talk about the importance of what happens in our schools.
Yeah, it's a board you can absolutely design. What do we think is most important? And let's design our meetings accordingly.
And this is a great space to be at, as we've been, as I've been working with other boards. They first had to be clear about what that vision and values were for their community. And then they engaged in the process of looking at their agenda and how are they spending their time. And for them, it was similar results to what you have now. As they started to think outside the box of, where are we, you know, doing our agenda the way that it looks like now? And the response was, well, that's how it was done, you know, 50, 70 years ago, and we've just continued with that same pattern. So as they reflected on what was valuable to them and what they wanted to continue focusing on, which was their vision through their student outcome goals, one thing they figure out was, they were spending about, their board meeting was about three hours long. And they were spending about 60 minutes, 60 or 60 minutes, just on recognizing students. And this was recognizing student athletes. So at first, it was like, whoa, you know, this is important for us, it's important for the community that we recognize how our students are doing. But then as we continued to reflect, is it okay? Is it what students know or able to do? And is this the vision that we have for the community? And they engage in a conversation of, it's important to make sure that we recognize our athletes, and this is a district, a small district, where their students do a great job in sports, in soccer and football and volleyball, and they win a lot of, you know, U I L championships. So one of the things that they started to wrestle with is, what's the purpose of recognizing students during our board meetings? Their thought was, well, we want students to come in and be recognized, but does it matter that we are the ones recognizing them? Because they also talked about family, parents, joining and recognizing them. It got to the point though, where they were winning so many championships that the boardroom was not big enough for everybody to be accommodated and, you know, have a seat and recognize their students. So that was the turning point where they began to reflect, who's getting the benefit of recognizing the students? And is that the, is sports one of the focuses that, one of the things that we want to focus on? So their answer was, no, we want to recognize students academically, that's the vision that we have for our district. They still thought that it was important to recognize our athletes, but they provided a different venue, a different space where family was able to join, regard, you know, they found a space that was going to be big enough. So they still recognized their students, but during their board meetings, the focus was those student outcome goals. And instead of recognizing based on the, you know, championships that they won, they began to recognize students and staff based on their accomplishments. That was moving the needle for the district towards those outcome goals that they created at the beginning of this process.
And it's hard to do, but it's doable.
And I love that example, as it applies to me, because oftentimes, I've struggled to then how I think about my board report. If I, if, if I feel like whatever I need to say in my board report, there isn't a space in our agenda, then my board report becomes something that, it's as if it has nothing to do with the agenda if there isn't an opportunity in the agenda to have those dialogues, those discussions. On the other hand, when there are those spots in the agenda, and I'll just speak on myself, I, I, I use a tactful strategy of trying to squeeze in as much as I can to that one item, if, if there isn't going to be an opportunity either in the rest of that. And so it, it may come off as me trying to say too much in that space, right? So for me, it's reconciling like, what, what are our different perspectives? What are our roles to, for all of us to be able to engage and participate in a way where it's not like that one thing, right? That then become, then, then, you know, is that the best use of our part-time? Maybe not. Is that the best use of my time? Much like recognizing the athlete, maybe not, right? As we think through the agenda.
Yesterday, we did a quiz. The second question in that quiz was, on a scale of zero to 10, how focused is the board effectively on student outcomes? Which is what you wrote in your 10 words or less. As you begin to reflect on that question, how is that related to this? And as a corollary, the third question in our quiz yesterday was, zero to 10, how focused am I? How, how attentive are my behaviors to student outcomes in our school system? As you reflect on this and you think about those two questions, what's coming up for you? Make it an I statement. As you reflect on those questions, how focused is the board on student outcomes? How focused am I on student outcomes? As you reflect on those two questions with this activity in mind, what's coming up for you? Make it an I statement.
I'll go. I think for me, I put myself like at a seven or an eight. I take this work incredibly seriously. I prepare for meetings. I engage in those questions. I'm deeply concerned about student outcomes. And I know that to be true in my head, and I know that to be true in questions that I asked. And in doing this, I don't know if there is an opportunity for me to demonstrate that in the public space that is our meeting, to ask those questions publicly, have those conversations publicly, that their quest, I would have reached out to staff or I would have asked the superintendent about, hey, I heard this is happening at this school, can I get some background? But it wasn't done in a way that was public. So if someone were to say, well, you say you're committed, but in the meetings, I don't see it after we code it, I'm aware that there isn't a public space at the moment set up that allows for my deep concern to show through, except I would say at workshops, when we can have those conversations more candidly.
All right, so sum all that up in just one simple I statement.
I'm deeply concerned about our student outcomes and want to have a better way to show that publicly.
Got it. I'm deeply concerned about our student outcomes, and I want a better way to, to show that publicly. Who else? As you reflect on how focused the board is, how focused I am, you think about this particular conversation, what's your reflection? Make it an I statement.
I'm deeply concerned about our student outcomes, and I'm looking for a better way to demonstrate that.
Yeah. I'm deeply concerned about student outcomes, and I'm looking for, I'm looking for a better way to demonstrate that. Yeah. I'm not demonstrating the focus I have in my heart on what's possible for our students. I'm looking for a better way. Yeah. Who else?
I now have more information and more ways that I can go forward in working with the superintendent to make sure that our meetings reflect our visions and values.
Yeah. I'm, I'm starting to see ways going forward that I, I can help lead changes so that our meetings reflect our vision and values. That's something I can do. I, I can actually lead that into being, yeah. Anyone else? What are you taking away from this conversation? Make it a nice statement. Jill, what you got for us?
I'm thinking that maybe when it comes time to board reports, it should be solely focused on...
Make, make it a nice statement.
Should be focused on student outcomes by my experience in visiting with teachers and principals at school sites to see where they stand in terms of narrowing the achievement gap, for example.
So, so what I hear you saying is, I should focus my board reports on student outcomes?
That's right.
Got it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Not on what I do or where I've been, but what's happening with our student outcomes.
What's actually resulting in the lives of our children. Yeah. Jill?
Yeah, I'm just sitting with the vision and values on display, because I have the benefit of interacting with each of the board members, and I know, I know where their hearts and minds are in terms of students. So I, I have that benefit. But vision and values on display is a, is a really powerful way to acknowledge their vision for our children.
How much time would you like for lunch? It's currently 24 after. How much time would you like for lunch? And if you haven't finished eating, by the way, you're always welcome to bring it back to the table, but how much of an actual break, break do you want before we start talking? All right, then we will get the party started in 35 minutes. Enjoy.
Sounds like a high school lunch break.
Thank you for lunch. That was delicious, by the way. So what we're going to be moving on to today, we are going to start making decisions about where we're, what we want to prioritize on, and then we'll figure out where we are as we continue talking about the board and how the board behaves. So in front of you, you have a document that is titled, Student Outcomes-Focused Governance. I'm going to ask you to turn to page two. So turn to page two. And the first piece that we have there is the vision goals, vision and goals. So for this first piece, it says, the board will, in collaboration with the superintendent, adopt a vision and goals that are student outcome focused. So I'm going to ask you to evaluate on your own where the board stands. And we're going to be moving from left to right. So we start with the first column, left to right, not student outcomes focused. And as we move to the right, it says approaching student outcomes, meeting student outcomes, and then mastering student outcomes. So this is how we're going to evaluate ourselves. In order for us to move from one column to the next, we need to make sure that on that first one, it says, the board is not student outcomes focused if any of the following areas are true. So if any of the items that are listed under the first column are true, we cannot move to the next column. Okay? Once we go to that second column, approaching student outcomes focus, in order for us to move to the next column, to the meeting student outcomes, we need to make sure that we have all the actions listed on that second column before we move on to the next one. Okay? So all of the items here, and then we need to have all of the items on that next column to be able to accomplish that. So let's do the first one together. The first one with vision and goals. Go ahead and take a look at the first one. Remember, if any of the sections are true on that first column, we cannot move to the next one. So I'll give you about a couple of, okay, questions.
Quick question, Monica. When, when it says, refers to the board here, is it this current board or a previous board?
This, that's a great question. This is going to be this current board right now.
Okay.
So take a look on page two, start on the first... Start on the first column, left to right. If any of those items are true, you stay there. So as you're thinking about your board right now, identify which column the board will be at right now. So as we look at vision and goals, uh, who would like to go first? Who would like to share where you identified where your board is at right now?
Based on our conversations from, uh, yesterday and today, I believe we're in, um, column one.
Column one? Okay, so, uh, which one of those, um. Are, so which ones will be true? Like the board has not adopted a vision.
So I personally haven't participated as part of this board in a process for adopting a vision.
Okay. Thank you, Juan. Who else?
Or, or any of the other ones in column.
Thank you. Diana?
I'd have to agree with the assessment that we're in the first column going by these metrics.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody have anything different? Megan?
I think we have, um, a couple elements in the second column. But because you specified that it is this current board, um, no. And then because our superintendent is newly appointed, this superintendent has, hasn't been engaged. In that vision setting process, so.
Yeah. Okay.
We've got some of, some elements, but, but because the basics were done in my recollection, uh, 2005, that's way before my time.
So there seems to be a consensus that right now the board stands at not student outcome focused. Uh, what would be some things that you can do to continue moving forward? What would be some items that you could focus on or work on to move forward?
I think we already, uh, have created and have in place and will have more in place spaces for our community. For us to listen to, um, community, uh, about their vision.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I think we, we already do that on an ongoing basis. It would just be to best orient ourselves to receive that, uh, input. Because we already have spaces, we'll have new spaces and we, we have made the commitment to have those be ongoing spaces. Whether it's a superintendent's advisory committee or our budget work, uh, our, our work, uh, with establishing an equity leadership team. All of those, I think lend themselves to listen to the vision of the community.
Yes, and as we're thinking about that vision that is going to help you drive, uh, when you're developing those student outcome goals. Uh, if you continue reading, uh, you know, on that last column under that mastering, um, student outcomes. Uh, the, who, uh, could read the first bullet for me or that first descriptor? May I have a volunteer for the first descriptor? Under mastering student outcomes, the last column.
The board used a process that included students, parents, staff, and community members in a way that leads them to express ownership of the adopted vision goals and interim goals.
So under that first one, uh, it says, uh, you do not have that opportunity to listen to the community, right? But as we're moving to the right, as we're moving towards those mastering student outcomes, it is you listening to the community. Uh, so when you're developing those goals and, uh, those, um. Interim goals, you have that feedback and that buying from the community. It's not gonna be just you, um, based on the information that your superintendent is giving you and providing to you. It will be you going out there to the community, uh, and having that, uh, communication with stakeholders.
Can I just interject one thing?
Mm-hmm.
I think, um, and I've thought of this occasionally and I, I just thought of it again. Is because we just went through this process of hiring a superintendent, we did a significant amount of community outreach around vision. It wasn't, we, it, it was meant to be about not who do you want, but what do you want in a leader? What do you see, um, for the district? So I would imagine that we have a wealth of information that's as current as last January and February. That could help inform this work that I don't think we're starting from scratch. I think we did seven, eight, nine, 10 public forums plus lots of opportunities to engage online for folks to talk about what they wanted. In leadership and what they wanted from the district. So I don't want us to forget that we do have that information stored and maybe we figure out a way to bring. That visually and cognitively back into the conversation as we look to move forward.
Definitely. You can use that information to begin that process, uh, of drafting your tentative goals. Uh, but also as you're drafting them before, uh, you adopt, you wanna take out those goals to your community again and then get that feedback. And that's the beauty of that two-way communication where you share with your community, these are our goals. And you will know the reasons why you came up with those goals. You share those reasons with your community and then the community has an opportunity to ask questions, uh, and give you feedback. Mm-hmm. So what would be some, uh, behaviors as you're thinking about, uh, vision and goals? Uh, what would be some of the things that you would like to prioritize? Uh, as, as we begin to think about our future plan of where we want to go? What would be some behaviors, uh, or some actions that you would like to engage in as far as this, um, instrument right here?
So one thing I've been thinking about is having some common approach to community engagement from a board perspective. So we're, we're implementing a number of staff-oriented solutions that are student engagement and, um, committees and processes to really uplift community voice. From at a holistic level. But I wonder if there's a way for the board to decide on the parameters of an, an approach they'd like to use. In their respective areas that then is collected up into a, a community-type assessment or community, community voice from those different perspectives.
Yeah, and whose responsibility is it to go out to the community and share those goals and get that buying from the community? The board, right? It's gonna be you, the board, going out to the community. It's not gonna be your superintendent, uh, or her staff. Uh, it is going to be you because you are representing your community. So as you begin to think about how are you going to share those goals and how are you going to get that feedback? Uh, one of the things that we recommend is exactly that. Come up with a process where all of your stakeholders will be listening to the same message. Rather than, you know, this morning we experienced some of you saying there's five goals, there's three goals, there's six goals, uh, and different, uh, focuses, right? So as you're thinking about sharing this with your community, what can you set in place? So that when you go out, and we suggest going out with another colleague, with another trustee, so at least two of you going out there. When you're sharing those messages, uh, with your stakeholders, everybody's sharing that same message. Everybody gets to hear the same message. You collect that feedback from your community, but it's the entire board, even though it's not everybody present. Regardless of where you're talking or who you're talking to, um, everybody gets to hear that same message.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Seems to me one of our primary responsibilities is to support the superintendent's goals. In what way should our goals differ from hers?
So remember how we talked about, um, who represents the community? Who represents the community? The board. So the moment that we ask our superintendent to create her goals. At that moment, who is in charge of creating those goals? The superintendent. So you're relinquishing your responsibility of developing those goals to your superintendent. And that is not her task. That's not her responsibility. Your responsibility as a board is to create, uh, those goals. You need to create those goals in collaboration with your superintendent. She'll provide you with, uh, look at the mastering student outcomes focus. What is that last descriptor? Yeah.
Root cause analysis, comprehensive student needs assessment, to your point, Mr. Meyer, about data. And similar research-based tools to inform identification of and prioritization of. So not, not done in isolation, done with all of the data that we have about our students. Um, but with, with also the community's vision through you represented in it.
Yeah, so based on data, with the support of your superintendent, you will be developing these goals. Uh, the benefit of that is when anybody asks, hey, how many boards, you know, does, how many goals does your board have? There's gonna be no question about, oh, is it three? Is it six? Is it five? It is going to be that same goal. And those goals will be what's gonna be driving your superintendent and everything that she does to align, uh, her district. To get you to accomplish those goals. So your most important task is you as a board, you develop those goals with the support of your superintendent. But at the end of the day, it is your responsibility because you represent your community. And your goals are a way of how you're going to be representing the vision for your community. Once you decide that, then you give those to your superintendent and her job then at that point will be to make sure that she carries on and meets those goals. John?
So, uh, Monica, based on that premise. Is it recommended for us to then upon? Basically, we have a, because we're off-cycle. Some of us run every two years so that not all of us are running for election or reelection. Is it recommended that we go through, not the exact same process, but an iteration of that process as new board members come in? And/or, uh, as we have, in this case, a new superintendent? Or new board members come in? And I'll, I'll speak for myself. I'm up for reelection in a year and a half, basically. And let's say that either I don't seek reelection or someone else. And so all the work potentially that I would put in next year to get community input, to co-develop goals. Would presumably a new board member just inherit those goals and have to work through them? Or do we imagine a process that then that new school board member would engage, uh, in an iteration of that?
How long, um, do we suggest that your goal should be? Five years, right? So when you, uh, begin that process, the ending, uh, date should be five years. Why do you, uh, think we make that recommendation of five years? Why not change them every time you have a new trustee, uh, every time that you have a new superintendent? Why, uh, what's the benefit of having an ending date of five years?
You'll never reach the end of your goals if you're changing them every year and a half or two years. You'll never get there.
Yeah, remember my example yesterday of driving and then just looking and focusing at that yellow line instead of looking at the horizon? Uh, you don't want to be changing your goals every year, every year and a half. Every time you have a new trustee or every time you have a new superintendent. Your goals should be that long-term. You're setting the expectations of what you want for your children, uh, in those five years. Now, if you accomplish the, your goal before five years, then yes, you know, you're welcome to go back, engage in that comprehensive needs assessment again. And revise the goal, um, that you have. You don't have to wait until those five years. But we do not recommend that you change every five years. Otherwise, it would be like the flavor of the month, uh, or the flavor of the year.
Yeah.
Uh, now, another reason why we ask you to go out and engage the community. Is that if you have new trustees and you're doing your job of engaging and listening to the community. Your goal shouldn't be something new to whoever wants to run, to join your board again. Uh, and one of the conversations that you've been having is how do we, uh, create a more, uh, efficient way of onboarding our new trustees, right? So think about this work. And as you're thinking about your goals and someone else is trying to get on board, even before they run for elections. It's like, okay, at Long Beach, this is what we do. These are the goals that we have and this is what we want to accomplish in five years. And that's one of the things that a lot of the, um, boards that I've been working with are doing now. They're gonna have November elections. So they don't want someone new with a different perspective to join because that can be disruptive to the board. And the behavior and the cohesiveness of the board. So not that it happens here, but where I'm from, some people run because they want to get rid of the superintendent. Or they wanna get rid of the coach, or they want to fire this teacher. And then they get seated and it's like, well, wait, wait a minute. You mean I cannot fire that principal? It's like, no, that's not your role, right? So educating your trustees, um, or your future trustees, uh, as far as like what the work is going to be. So when someone new comes in, they already know what to expect.
And, and the logic of my question was based on that. That, um, as a few of, uh, my colleagues here refer to, we do have a 2017 to 2022 strategic plan. And at the same time. Two of the members that, or at least two, potentially more of them that were involved in that plan will no longer be here to see the fruition. Of that plan and we will have two new board members. So I think that's the part for me where, um, you know, placing value on the work that's already been done. But at the same time, we have a new superintendent. And then with the new two board members, we would have had, by this time next year, three board members that didn't, the majority, that didn't participate. In the 2017 through 2022 strategic plan. So that's where the logic of my question comes from. That even that five years. It's, it's all, you know, it's not necessarily on cycle of who the board or superintendent.
Yeah, and that is why you're going to rely on that comprehensive needs assessment. Because it's not going to be, you know, I love technology, so I want one goal in technology. It's not gonna be based on your preference or what you like or you don't like. It is going to be based on the needs of the students. So if you identify that those were the, uh, biggest gaps that you have for the district. Then it doesn't matter who comes on board as a trustee. As long as you haven't met your goal, then that is going to be the focus for your district. Uh, it doesn't matter who the superintendent is. If those are the biggest gaps, then we wanna make sure that we're closing those gaps.
Might I add? Our superintendent each year establishes goals. It's our responsibility to help her meet those goals. Shouldn't reason then every year we should modify our goals as a board?
Uh, no, and what we're suggesting through this process is.
Superintendent's goals change, goals change. Why shouldn't ours?
Our suggestion is through this process, once you create your goals, uh, for, you know, the three to five years. Then you are going to be, those, uh, board goals will become your superintendent goals. And her task is going to be to move your students, uh, towards meeting those goals. towards meeting those goals. Your superintendent will not have goals every year. What she's going to do though, and you guys are getting ahead of this instrument, but what she's going to do is that she's going to develop a plan. And in that plan, then she's going to say, okay, this is the goal that you have for, let's say, closing the gap. If this is a goal that you have for closing the gap, this is my plan and this is how I'm going to make sure that the district meets the goal that you're asking for. So if we keep changing those goals every year, we talked about it yesterday, and it goes with you changing your goals every year. We don't give her time to set those systems in place to see that change towards meeting those goals. So once you come up with your goals, with your three to five goals for three to five years, those goals will become the superintendent's goals. And that is what, that's part of what you're going to be using to evaluate your superintendent. So as we're thinking about where we're at right now, you mentioned you had between three to five, three to six goals. The ones that you already have in place, are those smart, smart goals?
Is the hyperlink, Jill, do you know of the hyperlink that Letitia sent us? Does that take us to our, okay?
And those were the ones that felt in red this morning, right? So do you remember hearing a starting date, ending date, starting point, ending point? Did he mention anything like that?
Not in terms of the goal areas, no.
No, right?
Correct.
I think this is where Dr. Baker was talking about. That as, so the goals are generic, but then the LCAP, because that's a requirement from the state of California, became some of the guiding document around the specifics around suspension rates, around those measurable things so that they aren't embedded in the strategic plan goals as they used to be because the LCAP then came in as this other document. So I think it's worthy of a conversation. Do we take those out of the compliance document and then put them back into a space where someone can say, we want to see a seven-point percentage growth over the next five years in English language arts scores? Because if I recall, that's how it was probably 2012, 2013, 2014. We had those very specific numbers that seemed big at the time. But again, then the superintendent worked over those four years to accomplish that total. But I think that stuff was removed in the 2017 iteration because of the onset of the LCAP as a compliance doc. So I think it's worthy of a conversation. How do we pull stuff back out of there and put it into the space that is part of our community vision, not just compliance?
So a lot of states wind up doing something very similar to this. I can think of several states that do where essentially the state legislature has said, you have to adopt this local control and accountability plan. In your case, they called a district improvement plan in other places. There's a lot of states do this where the legislature says the board needs to adopt a plan for what operationally, how the district is going to cause improvements. I think what you're hearing from us is that we just think that is fundamentally at odds with effective governance practice. That the board should be saying what needs to happen and the superintendent should be saying how it needs to happen. And so the only reason that it makes sense for a board, the only reason a board is in adopting a how plan to accomplish the what is because you're legally required to do so. If that was not a legal requirement, our coaching to you would be stay out of it. That is not the board's function. And it has been thrust upon the board as a factor of state statute. And to be clear, that again, is not uncommon. Your legislature isn't the only one that doesn't understand how effective school board governance works. Other states also lack this understanding. And so that's just where we find ourselves. And so it does create confusion because what you're trying to do is do the things that by law that you're expected to do that are appropriate. But I would just invite you to consider that there is, what you're legally required to do doesn't mean that that is, you know, what is governance best practice. Like the moment the board gets involved in adopting the how plan, you're essentially being thrust, again, by state statute, into the middle of something that really should just belong to the superintendent. The board says, where are we going? The superintendent comes up with a plan to how to get there. And generally speaking, in a rational environment, the board would not be adopting the plan. But because of your state law, you're being forced to act in a way that I'm describing to you as not rational governance behavior, but is legally required behavior. And so that's part of the challenge that you find yourselves with. And so, yeah, I hear, you know, John's struggle on this. He's like, well, wait a minute. Isn't this what we're supposed to be doing? From an effective governance perspective, no. From a legality perspective, yes. And so to juggle that, again, because a lot of districts, you know, deal with this in other states as well. So to juggle that, we generally recommend kind of what Megan's describing, is that the board says, here are the goals. Here is the vision that our community has for what students know and are able to do. And by the way, I'd clarify. Notice the goals that you all wrote down and shared earlier. Those are not all about focused on student outcomes. Most, in some cases, all, but in most cases, most of them are actually focused on adult behaviors that you're wanting to see happen to get you to student outcomes. And so what we're suggesting is actually taking a step back from all of that and saying, what are the outcomes we want for students? And let's establish, you know, one to five. We generally encourage three. What are the things that we want to see happen for students? What we want them to know and be able to do five years from now? And let those be the goals for the organization. The goals that the board's behavior is aligned to, the board goals that the superintendent's behavior is aligned to, and so on and so forth. Underneath of that, because she's a clever chief executive, she's going to say, okay, here are the student outcomes we have to produce. And she's going to go to her cabinet, you know, all of her senior leaders, like, okay, in order for us to accomplish this, I need you all to be working on this piece and you all to be working on this piece and this piece. And so she's going to divide the work. So she'll have her own kind of managerial level goals underneath that that she is using to lead the organization. But that is not a replacement for the board's visionary goals for the district as a whole of what we're trying to accomplish over the next five years. And so understand that there may be managerial, you know, each department may have their own goals, but those aren't a replacement for the board's goals. Those should be subordinate to and aligned with the board's goals for the district. And so the question is, how do we evaluate the superintendent? You do not evaluate the superintendent based on implementation plans, based on how hard they worked, what her intentions were. What we're suggesting is you evaluate the superintendent based on what are the goals for student outcomes? Are we making progress? If you're making progress toward these high-level goals that the board set, the superintendent is doing her job. If you're not making progress, the superintendent is not doing her job. That is a kind of a yes, no, black, white, fairly straightforward conversation. All too often what happens is we don't have goals about what we want students to know and be able to do. What we do have is goals around what we want adults to be doing. But this goes back to our conversation yesterday. This is the board that has goals around adult inputs. Like, that is, you know, that is fundamentally problematic and dangerous. And so that's why you don't want a board to be evaluating a superintendent based on their departmental level goals or all those managerial level things that put in place. You want to say, here's where we're trying to go as a district. And from our perspective as a board, superintendent performance is indistinguishable from district performance. If the district is getting it done for kids, that means the superintendent has done their job. If the district is not getting it done for kids, that means the superintendent has not done their job. Regardless of how you feel about the superintendent, if you hate them with a fervent passion, but children are learning, then that means they're doing their job. If you love them dearly, but no children are actually learning, that means the superintendent is not doing their job. That is the, that is the challenge that we're lifting up is to confront superintendent performance as being identical to district performance. And so when you set these, this becomes, here's what the district is accountable for, here's what the superintendent is accountable for. Any other plans and implementation stuff, she is welcome to do, but I would not evaluate her on did she accomplish her plan. I'd evaluate her on did she accomplish the board's goal.
And indeed, we're asked to do that each year. The superintendent writes his or her goals. At the end of the school year, we write each one of us a comprehensive evaluation of whether he or she has met those goals. Maybe I'm guilty of reductionism, but isn't this the way it works? If the superintendent doesn't meet his or her goals, it's a sign the district is failing. That is reflected in our election or reelection or not. So there's a system that's built in that is much simpler than the one we're describing. The superintendent's goals, in my view, become paramount. It's our responsibility as board members through policy to make sure that he or she succeeds with those goals.
Yeah, Juan?
Yeah, I think you're phrasing it as challenging. I would personally take it a step further. I think we have inherently, by the way you've sort of laid it out, AJ, there's competing interests in that scenario. And I'll give you two examples. One is if our board is being asked to take action vis-à-vis our agenda, right? And vis-à-vis the state compliance, Department of Ed Code on items that are majority adult input and output focused, yet the role fundamentally of our board is around, as we've expressed, improving student outcomes and upholding the vision of our community around achieving those goals. It's contributing then to this culture of compliance, right, on the one hand, legally, legislatively, versus the true mission and vision of our educational system. I don't think that's unique to California, but I think it's magnified in California given the politics of our local control funding and our local control accountability plan. So that's one example, right? And I think there are ways, not now I'm thinking through that in terms of, okay, what does that look like? But I think the other aspect of it here is, I'll point to the example you gave. If a school board member is like, you know, I'm hearing from community that we don't like that principal or this or that. It is, again, there is a competing public interest and then why are we voting? Why are those things being brought before us if, as you've eloquently said so many times, John, and we're in agreement, we don't, we shouldn't micromanage personnel issues, yet all of these things come before us? And so it's that kind of like, okay, so should we not spend time on those items deliberately by design? Because ultimately, we shouldn't be focusing our energy, our time, our resources on, in this case, management, as you've said so many times, or instruction, or the budget committee work that we do. And that's the part where I think that from a public perspective, there are notions, and now I'm on this side of it. Two years ago, I was on the public side of it, as many of us. Then what does go on in closed session if it says, you know, superintendent evaluation there and all of the superintendent's goals should be the district's goals? Why aren't those things then being discussed, presented in public session? So I think there's a, by default, there are competing interests in the exacerbation, real or perceived, of what's going on in closed session then? If all of the superintendent goals and superintendent evaluation should be in alignment with our strategic plan, why are those things then going, why is that conversation going on in closed session? And then we never have that, or rarely outside of closed workshop, have those conversations in open session?
Yeah. I think this is a valuable thing to wrestle with. You can have conversations about district performance in closed session because that is aligned with superintendent, assuming they're aligned, then yes, you can have it. You don't have to, but you can. And so I think that's something that the board has to wrestle with, with the superintendent of. What do we want to show our community in our public board meetings? And then how do we design things to make that happen? But I think that's a, that's part of what the conversation we're having today is, what do you all want that to look like? But that exists for you all to design, you know?
I think, I mean, it's great. I think your question is great, Juan. I think of an example from recent that might illuminate what we're talking about. So the act of evaluating me, the opportunity for personnel feedback, for growth feedback, for positive feedback, that is part of the established in my contract evaluation cycle. And we have talked about making more public the work of the district in terms of departmental goals, senior staff's goals in this coming year, even before we get to redo a whole strategic plan, and not having that be personnel-oriented or in closed session because it illuminates the goals of the district. And so I think, you know, I'm kind of teasing that out. Yes, there's an act of, like, the evaluation process that has a private aspect to it because it's a personnel matter. But there are so many other things that could move into. Once there's some agreement on the goals, then that there's a great opportunity in open session to really have. So I'm seeing it that same way that you're talking about.
So as we're thinking about this vision and goals and we see this portion as our starting point, looking at the four different columns, if we were to say in the next three months, where would you like to focus on? What would be those activities that would you like to engage in? Where do you think, as a board, you will be able to move towards? So you identify the board to be on not student outcomes-focused. If we were to say in the next three months, what would you like to accomplish? Where would you like to be? Where would you identify? What would be that target?
One thing I'd like to share is that I think there's an opportunity to begin the comprehensive student needs assessment process in public. And that's part of the alignment of our current strategic plan with staff's actions that I planned for my first year. And so I think that gets us to looking at whether you call it baseline or an element of knowing which of our students are achieving, which of them are not, and helps to create the thinking that should go into a next-generation strategic plan. Let me also say, while that plan was written to be from 2017 to 2022, if we get through a process of establishing board goals and a comprehensive needs assessment, there's nothing that says that we can't launch the next version of a strategic plan before that, so.
Yeah. So that would be a great starting point, begin to look where the district is at through that comprehensive needs assessment. What else could you accomplish?
I think based on that, we can also start looking at what are referred to here as interim goals based on that initial assessment, right? And maybe picking one to three, not looking at the whole in its entirety. Obviously, looking back at it to see where we're at, but then not trying to tackle all five goals immediately, right? So maybe looking at those first, that first year to three-year period and saying, here are two goals as an example that we're going to use to, for lack of a better word, pilot what other things have to get built into both our superintendent evaluation but also the other components of how we're approaching student outcome. More focused on student outcome.
Yes. So as a board, you own the goal development process. Your superintendent is going to own the development of the interim goals. That's the person that you hired as an instructional expert. So once you give her your goals as a board, then she's going to figure out how are we going to measure that these goals are going to be attained? We don't want to wait one year, but every month, being able to go back and review the progress of those interim goals. Now interim goals, just like your goals, have to be smart. So yesterday, we talked about that starting point, ending point, starting date, ending date, the population and the way to measure. The same goes for those interim goals as well. Now, as we're thinking about the interim goals, Now, as we're thinking about the interim goals, who, may I have a volunteer that will read the second descriptor on the last column? Under mastering student outcomes, second descriptor. Still on page two? Thank you, Megan.
All of the interim goals are predictive of their respective goals and are influenceable by the superintendent and the superintendent's team. Predictive suggests that there is some evidence of a correlation between the interim goal and the goal. Influencable suggests that the superintendent, and through them, the district staff, has authority over roughly 80% of the inputs the interim goal is measuring.
So as we're thinking about our goals, we're going to have those, the five-year ending date, and then we're going to come up with, okay, year one, this is our target. Year two, we're going to move, you know, by this much. But your superintendent will be able to develop those interim goals that are going to be predictive of your goal. So if you have a goal on equity, what would be a way through those interim goals that we could figure out if we are on pace to attain that goal or not? Through that instructional lens. Okay? All right. Let's take a look at page three. And let's go to values and guardrails. So once again, remember that if you have a truth statement on that first column, we cannot move to the next. So I'm going to ask you two things. Figure out where you're at as a board. So that will be your first task. And then the second task will be, where would you like to be, let's say, in the next three to six months? What would you like to accomplish? All right. So based on what you read, where would you say you are as a board right now? Do we need more time to read? Are we still reading? Or what, we're thinking about it? Megan, you want to go for it?
Well, my head is swimming a bit. Obviously, we're not student outcomes focused, according to this, in that this board has not adopted a vision, and this board has not, well, we've adopted goals for this year. I think that's kind of the sticky point that we're in. Because we're in this huge transition, we did just adopt goals by which we will evaluate our superintendent in her first year. So when I think of this work, I think of, we're starting the process so that as we start next year, we can go full throttle. So in my head, I'm still swimming with the goals that we just approved and are posted on the site that are the superintendent's goals for the year. So there's a lot of things swimming. We have hosted opportunities to listen to the values of the community. I think the superintendent's search was a comprehensive ask of folks to tell us what was important to them. I remember sitting in on some of those sessions, and they were around equity. They were around different communities being the focus of the work that we do. So I think we have provided that opportunity. But again, this board hasn't done that. So I think what I'm hoping, where we can start or something that we can do, is figure out what some of those interim goals might be in light of the goals that are already on paper for the year that we have agreed will be the basis of our superintendent's evaluation for this year, that lead us in the direction of the work. So when we talk about guardrails and values, some of that are the ways we do agendas, the ways we interact as board members. Just some things that we've talked about in terms of how we are together that helps us in the focus of writing down, I think, Jill, I was going back over my notes, the thing that you said around giving the reasons on paper for the good thinking that we know we already have and that we're doing. So I want us to get to the place where we've written those things down.
Yeah.
So I don't necessarily know where I see that reflected, like, in writing in this, but I think that's where I want us, to see us go, is to really say, this is how we say we're going to be together in support of the values that we've set and the goals that we have for this year set forward in the greater pursuit of potentially looking at a new strategic plan that will give us those very specific, smart goals for the next five years.
Yeah. And this is going to be kind of-
That was a lot, sorry.
No, that was good. This will be kind of like a two-ring circus, where, you know, in one ring, you have what you currently have in place, those goals, what your superintendent is doing, her plan. So you're going to continue monitoring that progress. But then also, you're going to begin to focus on what are going to be those goals, what are going to be those guardrails, and begin to come up with a plan, engage the community, make sure that they're influenceable, that they're smart. So work on this plan while you're still, you know, having this circus ring or this plate up here still, you know, going, but begin to develop a plan that's going to be implemented in the next five years.
Great. Thank you for saying that out loud. I think one of my fears that's hovering back here is people who may be hearing this are thinking we're scrapping everything, which is not the intent at all. It's holding, it's the both and, and holding where we currently are and where we need to go. But there's practices that I feel we could put in place that will help us get there more clearly.
Yes.
So thank you for talking about our two-ring circus.
Thank you, Megan.
I did not be true also that we've been guilty of not codifying our goals. But there is an ethos that pervades this board and previous boards, expressed best in, let's do all we can to guarantee the personal and intellectual success of every student. Now, because we haven't codified that, doesn't mean we're not guilty of believing it and making it come to fruition. So throw that out.
Yeah. I think too, I might suggest that, as a starting point, that we look at the current strategic plan. And Juan used the term pilot, or whether you use it interim. Look at those five goals and select one to three measures to pilot or to test out this year that then also could enhance my first-year goals. So we're all learning, and we're all operating in the same ecosystem. And so my goals are, many of them are focused on implementation and baseline, the collection of baseline information towards a new strategic plan. But I think we could test out, in the five strategic plan areas, what would an interim goal look like as a way to make a pathway towards a new strategic plan?
Yeah, you're going to have an opportunity to try those on, see how they fit. And if they don't fit right, then you will have that time to go back and adjust before you get to the five-year end of your goal, and then you're like, well, that didn't work. So yeah, there will be a little bit of a wiggle room for you to try those out, figure out how those are working for you if you're getting the information that you're wanting to see during your board meetings. And if it is, then you stay the course. If it's not, then you go back and you can modify before you make those permanent. Now, let's take a look at page four, the monitoring and accountability. So the board will devote significant time monthly to monitoring progress towards the vision and goals. I'll give you some time to read, just like before, figure out where you're at as a board, and then decide where you would like to be in the next six to 12 months. The words that you see in bold, as you're reading those, those will be further defined on page 18. We have the definitions for you there.
Well, I would offer, we're all being deeply introspective, but it doesn't take long to look at that first column and say, that's where we are. Because we're guilty by any one of those standards. Yet, once again, you know, I would argue that there, that permeates our board and always has been, is a student outcome focus. Yet we don't meet these standards.
And one of the things that I will ask you to do-
It's a classic gotcha.
Yeah. One of the things that I will ask you to do is, you know, not think as, you know, this is where we're failing or we're not completing this. Remember that this is an improvement process. So there's nothing right or wrong about where we're at. It's just a natural process of, now that we know better and we have a tool, this is where we stand. But now that we have the tool, how are we going to move forward? So yeah, just like how we don't want our teachers or principals to feel bad because they're performing at a certain level, the thing is, how are we going to continue to grow? It's not about feeling bad because I'm at this level, but as I figure out where I'm at, what's going to be my plan to continue to improve? So right now, we're figuring out where we're at as a board, but then you're going to have a plan. So if you're saying we're focusing on student outcomes, then what's the behavior that you're going to be engaging on that is going to demonstrate that?
Yeah, and by your same rationale, John, I think we are well-positioned to begin doing many of these things immediately so that by next month and into January-
Yes, we are.
You know, I think it's viable for us to get through those first two columns in the next three to six months.
Yeah.
Basically, because much of it is scheduling, monitoring, tracking for things that we've already said are important and we value, many of which presumably we are already doing. It's just a combination of codifying, affirming, and formalizing.
It's almost like a confession, and now we're in atonement.
I mean, just looking at that second column, right? I am sure in the next couple of agendas, as we develop them, we can be more intentional and, you know, I love that you put us through that activity earlier, AJ. Input, output, or outcome. We can start looking at that more intentionally. We can certainly adopt a calendar. I think the only one there is the last one in column number two. The superintendent is evaluated only on performing, regarding performance regarding the board's goals, guardrails, and interim goals. Those are pending us identifying those one to three interim goals, right? But I think all the rest of them are, in my opinion, bold but viable.
Yeah. And once you identify those, understand and agree, right, that that's going to be the tool that you're going to be using to evaluate your superintendent. And those conversations will not be taking place just once a year when it's time for you to evaluate. Those conversations will be taking place every month through that monitoring calendar that is going to be developed and those monitoring reports that you're going to see. You're going to be talking about that student performance and how is that performance getting you to accomplish those goals every month during your board meetings, during open session?
Diana and Jill, might we, our next scheduled workshop is November, right? Might we allocate some time to sort of do some of the work at that point? Since we have more time?
Yes, we will. And I think that there's, I haven't spoken directly to Diana about it, but we definitely have some of the items that staff has prepared will support exactly what we're talking about.
And I think, like you said, Juan, I think we're poised to to put some of the work, or a lot of the work that we already do within a structure that just doesn't exist yet. It's been, again, it's been informal and it's traditions. And I think if we talk to some of the level offices' assistant superintendents, that they know a lot of this information. They probably have conversations every week around some of those metrics. It's just that we haven't been having those conversations in the public meeting. So I don't think it's a lack of, we haven't been doing these things. It's just we haven't been reflecting that in the public meetings that are outward-facing and retooling how we use our public time to reflect back on those things. And I think, AJ, you and I have talked in the past, yeah, it feels a little bit like confession and what are we doing? But we've also know that we have been serving students well. We know students have been learning in Long Beach. And there are boards that are probably on paper in the exact same place where their students haven't been learning. So just because we haven't had the framework to hang the work on doesn't mean we haven't been doing good, effective work for a lot of students for a long time, based on our past leadership and past boards. It's just taking those things that we do now and hanging them in a place that we can all point to at the same time. So that if I'm going to a public, board-led, public meeting to talk about our goals, I don't have to have a private meeting necessarily with Jill to say, hey, get me all this information from staff, because we will have already had those meetings in public, and I'm just there to reiterate the work that we've already publicly acknowledged, is how it feels in my brain.
And that's how powerful this monitoring calendar is. Imagine, you know, the benefit for you as a board to know which month, when are you going to be evaluating which specific interim goal? When are you going to be reviewing data on specific goals? And for your superintendent and her staff to know, okay, for this month, this is what, this is the report that we need to have? This is the data that the board is going to be looking at? It saves your superintendent a lot of time. Because rather than, you know, her having to wait on you all, you know, two weeks or three weeks before you come up with the agenda and then think about what might they ask, there's already a set expectation of this month, these are the interim goals that we're going to be evaluating. And you're going to know that for the duration of your goals, between those three to five years. So you will not be guessing- So you will not be guessing, you don't have to go and ask. You're gonna know this month, and you're, the community, your community will also know, when will you be evaluating each one of those interim goals?
And, and that's not just valuable from the school board side, it's also valuable for me as an administrator. I think about, you know, the, the current district that I'm leading right now is, uh, when I showed up, we did not have a monitoring calendar. And so I did not, I did not have a way of knowing from month to month to month, which, uh, which elements of the goals the board was expecting to see data on. Uh, and so we're putting that in place now, and so our, our monitoring calendar, we're finished establishing it, it'll last for, in our case, 48 months. Uh, and so I'll know exactly in January of '21, and in April of '22, and in October of '23, I know exactly, here is the exact slice of student performance that the board is expecting to see in that month. And so, from the administrative side, uh, it creates a lot of clarity, you know, it takes all the kind of gotcha out of it, you know, the sense of, well, wait a minute, why are they asking to see math this month? Well, they're asking because 14 months ago, they created a calendar that said, in this month, we'll look at math, and next month, we'll look at reading, and so on and so forth.
There's so much of this that I need to think more deeply about. I can't come to immediate resolution on a lot of these things. I really need to ponder them and, and evaluate them. For example, the superintendent is evaluated only on performance regarding the board's goals. That's a revolutionary concept in our district. Now, maybe it's good, I don't know, but we've always evaluated our superintendent on his or her goals. Now it's shifting to evaluate our goals, uh, she meaning our goals. That's a, that's a dramatic shift. For example.
It's done in partnership, and I think it is, it is a shift in the way that we're thinking about it, um, but it's also not done separate from one another. So I, I see it as a, as an opportunity to, um, build towards a shared vision, and I think that's the strength of, of, um, what has been very informal in terms of the governance team, but now putting some processes and things to think, kind of what I said earlier about succession planning, and not just assuming that we'll all be around together. Um, so it's a, it's a different way of thinking about it, John, but I don't think it's as misaligned as it might feel when you're kind of sitting in the moment with it.
And your superintendent will know in advance what's gonna be used to evaluate her. It's not going to be based on how the board is feeling, you know, when they come and they, uh, evaluate her, or if it's an election year or not. Uh, she will know way in advance what the expectation will be, uh, and how she needs to focus her work to make sure that those goals are accomplished. This is, uh, yeah, um, very, um, new process, and most, uh, districts along with, you know, some superintendents are kind of like hesitant, but once the superintendent gets to see, okay, these are the expectations, and there's nothing else is gonna come up, you know, no yellow buses, or no, you know, naming of this building, and me going out there and saying that that's the name of the building, um, it provides clarity to your superintendent. Uh, and she or he doesn't have to worry about what do the board, what does the board want? You're giving her those expectations. So then, her task would just be making sure that those goals are being met, and setting those systems in place to meet those goals.
I like Jill's use of the word "shared vision," but indeed, this statement cloaks the fact that she would do our bidding. Only regarding the board's goals.
She is your employee, that's correct.
That's dangerous, in my view.
Well, I, I would add as a part of that, that if, if we were to operationalize that in a vacuum and the abstract, then it's dangerous, right? But if we're relying on the superintendent-
Shared vision.
As an example, as an example. If we're gonna say, as an example, that we're going to diminish our, um, high school graduation, decrease our high school graduation grades between our lowest-performing students and our highest-performing students by 3% as an example, per year over the next few years, that we wouldn't just say 3% out of thin air, that our superintendent would say, here's how we've been doing the last five years. If it's our, you know, let's say it's higher than that, let's say it's 4%, why would we set 3% as a benchmark? When we've already been doing higher than that, right? So, I, I think that's where the shared vision, whether it's implicit or explicit, it is based on the work, the performance, the, in this regard, the goals that have already been worked on. And, uh, you know, I would hope that the culture is, the collaboration aspect of it is, we're, we're still asking for that data, for that to be shared publicly, but I think the main difference for us is that we can definitively say, this is where we're going to be in 2025, based on X, Y, and Z. So that as we're talking in our public forums and our community engagement, we can say, what do you all think, uh, of this? Uh, right? And get the stakeholder feedback and input. But that we would know, this isn't because I came up with, because, you know, quite frankly, I could say, let's cut it in half by next year, that ain't gonna happen, right? Because that would be me just in a vacuum saying, that's where I wanna be, and I, I look good in front of the community, but then when we don't get there-
Right.
You know, it's all of us collectively that are like, okay, what happened that you said you're gonna cut this by 50%?
And I, I also think, um, we're talking a lot about the superintendent and Dr. Baker, but what we know to be true, and you said it, is she is an excellent educational manager-
That's right.
With a great team.
That's right.
So when we set her goals clearly, or we set the goals for the district clearly that she is going to implement, she now gets to go to her team and say, this is what we said, this is the goal the board put out for what's going on in elementary. Elementary team, what are your goals to help us reach this bigger goal? And then it just becomes, and I know you do a lot of that work from the superintendent level down, and that's been done in the past. I think the piece that's always been missing is this, this part that comes from the board to be able to help, to, to set that vision, so that she can go and make those goals with her individual departments to help her, that's why she has the team she has, is so that she, they can help her meet the goal. So when we say superintendent, I know it sounds like Jill alone is only, is going to make this happen, but the reality is, there is a team of people who will have their own sets of goals to contribute to this work along the way.
I'm gonna ask you to turn to page two, uh, just very quickly. Page two, under the second column. And I'll ask for a volunteer for the second bullet. Or the second descriptor. Page two, or, lots of twos. Page two, second column, second descriptor. Diana, you wanna read that for me, please?
Sure. "The board has adopted, in collaboration with the superintendent, goals aligned with the vision."
So this is crucial to what, uh, Juan was talking about. It's in collaboration with the superintendent, with the support of that comprehensive needs assessment. So when you come up with an ending point, uh, you know, closing the gap 50%, it's not gonna be just this random number, just because it looks good. Part of the benefit of you engaging in that comprehensive needs assessment review is that you're gonna know what those numbers are. It's not just, uh, random numbers, but really, how many students are we talking about? How many students are going to benefit from this process? And you're gonna get to practice sharing that information when you meet with your stakeholders, and you share what those tentative goals, uh, or interim goals might be. So you're not gonna just stand there and say, okay, these are the goals, just because this is what was decided, but you need to get that community feedback, that community buying, um, and if you cannot explain those, there's gonna be no buying. So, be, for you being able to really understand what's the status of the district, and why are we moving towards that direction? Uh, also, when we were talking about those monitoring reports, as we continue to engage in this process, there are gonna be certain things that, uh, need to be part of those monitoring reports. And when you're talking about those reports, it's not gonna be just looking at the graphs and looking at the data, and we're done. It's going to be a two-way communication with your superintendent, you're gonna be asking those questions. And one of the most powerful questions that my boards ask every month is, based on the data and based on the plan that the superintendent has to keep us on track, or bring us back on track, is what can the board do to support the superintendent? So there was conversation about going out to campuses, right, and hearing the community feedback, but this is going to be that collaboration of, if we are off track, what can the board do to get the community and get our superintendent the support that she needs to get us back on track? So it's not gonna be just her responsibility, but it's that collaboration of, this is what she's doing, um, with the district, what can we do as we have access to the rest of the stakeholders?
I also would add, just because we've talked about different kinds of plans that have been in place in the district, so, in my mind, in an aligned and coherent system, we start with the board's goals. So if you were to use them as the strategic plan goals for right now, um, then you see the superintendent's and departmental goals aligned to the board's goals. You also see, in a plan like the LCAP, that LCAP becomes more relevant to you all and to the work of the district, because it is also aligned to the, to the board's goals. And so, rather than seeing them as running separate sets of goals, separate sets of plans, it's the way that, um, an LCAP represents a compliance document, but in a best-case scenario, it is achievement. It shows partially goals and partially the implementation plans for the broader goals of the board and superintendent, in my mind. So then it's not like we have all these different plans and different goals, they go together.
Thank you. So, let's go to page, um, five, and let's go to communication and collaboration. Once again, figure out as you read where we're at, and then where would we like to go? Page five, communication and collaboration. The board will lead transparently and include stakeholders in the pursuit of the vision and goals. As we look at communication and collaboration, where would you say the board is at right now? Any volunteers, or I'll call on volunteers? Juan, you wanna take this one?
Sir, am I reading or am I sharing?
Uh, you're sharing. Where would you, where would you say that the board is at right now?
So I would say, uh, a combination between column one and two. Um, I think here's the area where I, I believe that, um, the context that we're in is impacting both, uh, as an example, uh, public comment, right, has been, uh, there are a lot of challenges for, for public comment, and that's been a topic of our conversations for many months now, since we went to remote, uh, learning. And so, I think it does magnify a couple of the themes that we already touched on, and it's how much time we're spending on an agenda, on student outcomes versus how much time public comment. And I would venture to say, we, it would be good to do an analysis on the last few months, on how much public comment we've heard relative to items that are actually items that we discussed on an agenda, and it would probably be an anomaly in terms of, um, our commitment to community engagement, but then how that gets reflected on our conversations around student outcomes. So I think this is a little bit more, one that's a little bit more fluid, uh, for me. I'm reading at the very bottom of column two. Two-way communications between the board and community members has been very challenging, uh, right, because of our over-reliance on technology for that right now, and then the format that we use, uh, using our technology, or being at the mercy of our technology at some points. The other aspect for me is, um, communications beyond the two-way communication, uh, because we are, there are so many things moving from day to day, changing from day to day. I think one area that we, we have talked about before, uh, that I've had the chance to talk about with Jill is, sort of what information can be given to us in between school board meetings, if we're only meeting twice a month, and, um, we are going to get presentations, is there information? And to her credit, Jill has transitioned to giving us like weekly updates, right, so that we're not all waiting to see what gets covered during the staff report or the superintendent's report at the board meetings, right?
Yeah.
So, I, I don't wanna be evasive in my answer, but this is one that's a little more fluid and less clear to me because of context.
Yeah. And this is the one where it gets to be fun, uh, because with this one is where you start to think about how that agenda is going to look like, especially with that second column, where you, you know, AJ took us, took us through that activity of categorizing our minutes and how are we spending our minutes? So this piece right here is really going to, um, anchor you and provide that framework on how that agenda, uh, might look like. Uh, and it also describes, uh, some behaviors, right, like getting your agenda at least, you know, three calendars before the board meeting, um, which then in turns is gonna make you think about, okay, if I have questions, uh, and that's not gonna be modified, then how much more in advance, uh, do we need to be getting our agenda? So this is going to begin to set those systems in place, uh, and those behaviors that should be expected, so you can be ready, uh, when you attend those board meetings. Questions on, uh, go ahead, Megan?
I was just gonna say, you know, those are some of the things that I think we've always done well. That first column, um, more than six board meetings in a month. I, I've heard stories of 20-hour board meetings for some districts over the last couple of months. Um, the idea that we have an eight-hour board meeting is not something that I have experienced. I don't know if, I'm pretty sure John and Felton have said that some of our recent board meetings have been the longest board meetings in their tenure. So I think of the six or whatever, and our two-ring circus of goals and interim goals, taking that out, we're fine in that first column. Um, and then it is a bigger jump to the second- And then it is a bigger jump to the second column. All consent-eligible items were placed on a consent agenda. And they're all voted on. But it's like, wow, what is on the consent agenda? Why do we split that up? It goes back to that question of why does our agenda look like it looks? And I want more information on that so we can make modifications that, not throwing everything out because there's some reasons for that and working with Brent on those legal issues. But really, if we're going to spend two and a half hours together, let's be really intentional about what we're talking about for two and a half hours. And so that goal-setting and monitoring, setting up that calendar of what our conversations will look like, I think will be really helpful. And the community engagement piece, going back to what Dr. Baker said, coming up with some standardized engagement opportunities as board members. So that we're not necessarily just winging it, the five of us, because one of us went to a PTA meeting here or one of us held a town hall over here. But that there really is some consistency of what folks across our district can expect in terms of engagement. Not that we don't have unique relationships with our constituencies and all of that, but that as a base, they can expect to have a town hall once a quarter or once a year with their board member and another board member with the, you know, support of our media services who do a great job. But really looking at the opportunity to create some baseline experiences for constituencies so they feel like it's equitable. And that that's part of the gig that we sign up for, is this engagement in a way that is reflective of a common goal, not just our unique relationship to our constituencies. So I think there's lots of opportunities and might, you know, we start to go in all those places.
Which I connect that to succession planning as well. Because you're showing what it means to be a board member. And so if someone aspires to do that, they know what they're aspiring to. They're aspiring to a way of connecting with the community that is based on the work that you're doing. So I love that thinking.
And we've already committed to doing a communications audit to help us begin to have those conversations and that work around, so what can this look like based on our technology, based on access to our community? So a lot of these things that, it's a really exciting time and a really tenuous time of change and transition. But lots of pieces are starting to come together. And so hopefully, if you talk to us a year from now, we've connected a lot of the dots. But I know that I am personally excited about all the pieces that are in place as kind of big and unwieldy as it all seems today. But this piece I have to look at a little more because that'd be great if we spent two hours together twice a month and we were super concise around student outcomes. And when AJ comes back and looks at our minutes for our meeting can say, you've really tightened up your focus on student outcomes. And now it matches what we think we have in our head, so.
Yeah, cutting those meetings to two hours and then out of those two hours, spending one hour on student outcome goals. And right now, it may be, you know, feel or sound hard to accomplish, but it is attainable. And once we get to that point, I mean, you're going to know exactly where your students are at and what are those needs that your students may have and how you can better support your superintendent. You're going to leave those meetings more informed once you get to that point than how you're leaving your meetings right now. All right, so let's go to page six. And let's talk about, let's reflect on unity and trust. The board will lead with one voice in pursuit of the vision and goals. So just like before, read the four columns. Where are you at and where would you like to go?
Very rough for a start, that in the first two columns, our board has been compliant with all items except the very first. We've not adopted goals or interim goals.
All right. So then you would say that the board is approaching student outcomes? Is that what I said? Is that what I heard? That you would say that the only one that's missing is the first one? You have not adopted the goals and the interim goals.
But we've met everything in the second column. In my view.
Thank you. What about the third one? What are you missing?
A policy for requiring information provided. That's, yeah. The second one, you say, we're compliant certainly there.
So the second one, you meet all the descriptors? What about the third one? Meeting the third column, meeting the student outcomes?
The third one in the second column?
Oh, okay.
No, what about the, you said you meeting everything in the second column?
Yeah, everything.
Okay, so what are you missing in the third column?
In the third column? I haven't checked that one carefully yet.
Gotcha. Who else?
So I don't recall the specific language in our conflict of interest statements, whether they include all of that specific language. And I'm thinking specifically about, I don't remember formally agreeing that our, for instance, when we have our subcommittee meetings that are, that we formally have agreed to not give advice or suggestions at those subcommittees. Whether we're doing it by practice, I think for the most part, we should. And I can't say 100% definitively that I have, but I can't remember ever formally agreeing not to do that in either our onboarding process or some process. I also can't remember formally acknowledging or agreeing that we're responsible for the outcomes of all students, not just the students in our region. So again, by practice, we all, I have heard all of us speak to that, but I don't remember a conflict of interest statement requiring me to formally affirm that.
I mean, I would say actually in column one, the board has not established policies that establish board operating procedures. I think, I don't think we've done that formally. I think that's a lot of the things that we talk about in tradition. I know Brent and I have talked about that we mostly follow Robert's Rules of Order, but we haven't formally adopted. There's not a formal declaration that that's how we're doing things. So I would say from the get-go that, you know, Dr. Baker gave us yesterday kind of a draft of what a Board of Education handbook could look like. This is the first time I've ever seen these kinds of things put together in one space.
Me too.
So I would say, first column number two, that is not something that we have on paper except in this draft form that I got yesterday. In the second column, the board has adopted a policy procedure requiring that information provided by the superintendent to one board member is provided to all board members. I know that certain initiatives and things have come into play in my tenure on the board that I didn't know about until I got an update on them. So obviously, there were things that were happening that I wasn't aware of that were great, but I wasn't provided that information when it went out. And potentially other, maybe other board members were. So I think there, I personally have seen some inconsistencies there. And then when we get into the ethics and conflict of interest pieces, I think we're not. So when we talk about, especially the one around campaign contributions, I mean, there are FPPC practices in California that you can't, you can't vote on a contract for someone who gave more than $399, I believe it is, to your campaign. So I know that to be true because of my political lawyers and people that I've worked with in elections. But I don't know that that's anything that's ever been put in front of us from the board. So I would say we have a challenge in the first step and additional challenges along the way.
Thank you.
And I'm super excited about getting something like this in writing for that very purpose, that peace of mind that we all have the same information, we all have the same access to the superintendent and how we're supposed to interact with each other and with staff that isn't based on, oh, did I tell you, by the way, this is going that way? Especially again, as we're onboarding new folks. So this piece to me is critical in column one.
Thank you, Megan. Diana?
Yes, and I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Jill because Jill has been doing weekly updates for the board. So as we have conversations, maybe there's something that comes up when she's talking to John or maybe Megan. And she puts together information and then approximately once a week, she sends out that information to the entire board, plus other things. And she keeps a regular file of things to come out to us, which has really helped that part of the, we're in the loop. Right, feeling like we're in the loop of what's happening. Not that things come to us as a surprise twice a month, but that we know what's going on. Juan, I would add to what you were talking about with committees and everything. I don't believe we've reported out to us as a board. We attend committee meetings, we might attend other things, but we don't report to each other. And I, you know, there are a lot of things I'm seeing on these forums that, you know, we need to adopt. We need to figure out how to do that.
Yeah, and on that point, what I was thinking, thank you for, what I was thinking about with that is the times. So for instance, there's, in the last year, I think it was you and I on the budget committee or, and John and I on the budget committee now. The approach that I've been used, but it's based on nothing but a feeling, right? And again, observing my colleagues here is, if I'm going to ask something about that, that then I let staff know, hey, when we get to open session, could someone speak to that? But again, that's just because that's the way I thought it was. So my way of sort of reporting out has been, you know, when we get to a public session, can we talk about that or can we speak about that? Or can you elaborate about that? That's been my practice of interpreting the reporting out from any conversations that have been had in those committee meetings.
Well, this is going to be a great opportunity for you to set those systems in place and put them in writing.
Maybe that's the right way.
Yeah, if you like it, let's keep it. If there's a better way, then let's come up with a better way. Let's take a look at the last piece that is going to be the continuous improvement. So this is about the board will invest time and resources toward improving its focus on the vision and goals. This is going to be page seven. So just like before, where are we at, where would we like to go?
You still want to join our board, Doug Otto?
I think this one was interesting for a lot of reasons. Because first of all, column one, board evaluation. I don't believe, I don't believe we've conducted a board evaluation. And I've been on the board eight and a half years.
So the good news is that very informally, we just went through a board self-evaluation. Our suggestion would be that you use this instrument to evaluate yourself every three months and see how your performance, you know, what are your behaviors that are getting you towards accomplishing those goals? And what are those behaviors that are preventing you from moving forward? Yeah, so this would be the tool that we would recommend that you use as a board self-evaluation.
Yeah, and if you add up the number of points at the top of each column, it represents where you're at right now. That gives you a summative score between zero and 100. And so then you can see, hey, you know, we're starting at this number. You know, if we self-evaluate every three months, are we actually getting more focus on student outcomes or not? But you can actually track numerically, are we improving our focus? Then you know, then the question of, how do we know whether or not the board is effective? Stops being a bunch of people scratching their heads and trying to come up with an opinion and starts being, oh, here's an actual rubric with a numeric score. Hey, we started at 50, are we at 60 or have we dropped back down to 40? Hey, we started, we were at 70 last quarter. Have we moved up to 80 or have we dropped back down to 60? Or are we still stuck at 70? Those become questions you can now answer. Are we making progress? Or are we sitting back expecting the superintendent making progress, but we're not actually helping with progress?
And that also helps as you're moving forward. I had a board that was almost at the 90 points. And then COVID happened, so they went down to like 30, I believe it was, 33. And just knowing that they were at the 90, down to the 33, now that pretty much, you know, it's everything back to normal, quote unquote, now they're really looking forward to going back and setting a new system in place for, for example, that a community to going back and setting a new system in place for, for example, that community two-way communication. Before, it was easier to just go to a campus, you know, once a week, visit a different campus, but now with COVID, it's like, okay, what are we going to do to make sure that we're getting that bind, that we're communicating? So setting a different system in place based on the current times. So that has pushed them to, you know, kind of like think, well, if we want our students to continue learning, if we want our teachers to continue growing and teaching our kids, we have to set the example of also continuing to grow and provide that support.
Is there a specific self-evaluation tool that is aligned with this approach to board governance that's already developed or is the suggestion that our board find a tool that most reflects the kind of governance that they're aiming to?
No, this literally is the tool.
Okay.
That's why you'll see a number at the top of each column.
So everything that refers to self-evaluation is embedded into this?
Yes, you could you could, in fact, use this. There are other tools you could use. This is one that's kind of designed by, for, and about council districts. Certainly, there are other tools. One of the benefits of us creating this the way we've created it is it does give you a numerical score. So then the board can actually track their progress over time. It is one thing to say, Superintendent, why haven't you done your job, you know, when the board has gone from zero to 100? It's another thing to say, Superintendent, why haven't you done your job when the board has gone from zero to zero? It's like, well, maybe your behaviors as a board have played a role in the difficulty of my job. But absent a tool that gives a clear numeric result, it's it's hard to say how the effectiveness or ineffectiveness of the board has impacted the superintendent. By having a numeric score revealed through this instrument, it makes it easier to be able to say, hey, look, the superintendent, you expect me to go from here to here, but in that same time, you all have done this, and that has had an impact on my ability to lead the organization.
Can I ask a question of you two since you're you've had and you're having many similar conversations with other districts and other boards? What is your thought on, and I can't remember which one of you put it this way, that it's likely that if we that if it's not reflected in our agendas today, that if we went back and looked at an agenda last year or the year before, that it would probably look very similar? That, given all the accolades and the reputation that our district has, and that from the appearance of this board assessment, many of these things haven't been done as a board, yet the district has been very successful by many, if not all, measures. How do we account for on paper a board that may not be doing a lot of these best practices in governance, but in terms of the vision and mission, that it's been a successful endeavor?
So I'm working with the district right now, and I've been working with this district for about two years, and the board is very dysfunctional. They haven't been able to come together as a team and work as one. And they are a prime example because this board, when we're talking about the district performance, district-wise, they're a very high-performing district. The students are moving forward, they're meeting goals, they have great staff. And when I have conversations with them, it's like, okay, your district is performing at this level despite the board. Because if the board were to come together and work as a unit, I cannot even imagine all the benefits that their students and the staff will receive. So there has been those instances where the board is not working together and somehow, and I'm thinking that it's because they have a great superintendent and the superintendent is great, is doing a great job at managing and setting systems in place. But then also, I've seen the other side of the coin where student performance has been very low, and then they engage in this process, the board engages in this process, and they can see those amazing results increasing very quickly because the board is focusing on what is important to them.
Are there many examples of the board, you know, being in the 90s or whatever is considered a good score in this measurement and the district not having good student outcomes?
No. Now, it is very hard, though, to get to those 90s.
Growth, no, we're talking about growth.
Growth, 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 student improvement, I should say.
Yeah, I don't know of any. We actually, the state of Texas did a Texas Education Agency, just disclosure, I used to be the Deputy Commissioner of Education for the state of Texas. The state of Texas conducted a analysis of this, I think, last summer and looked at all 1,200 school districts across the state and put them into, I think, four buckets. One, the set of all schools that did not engage in this work at all, and then the set of schools that had the went to an orientation on this, similar to what we've done today. And then the set of schools that went to the orientation and then tried to implement this work by themselves, and then the set of all schools that went to the orientation and then tried to implement this over the course of a two-year period with a coach supporting them. And what they found was that for all the school systems that didn't go through this type of work, their growth, their student growth on state assessments looked like this, on the state accountability system, like this. And then for the folks who had this orientation but then didn't do anything else, theirs looked like this. And then for the people who had this orientation and tried to do this work on their own, looked like this. And the people who had this orientation and did this work with a coach looked like this. The the student growth in the state assess, the state accountability system was literally three times higher for the districts that were doing this work over a two-year period with a coach than for districts that never started doing this work at all. Again, that's largely focused on growth, not proficiency, but that's what you want. That's what I think you want to be focused on is, are students actually growing? And so, yeah, that's just one study in one place at one time. I wouldn't hang all of my hat on it. But to your question, I've not come across a school system where the board was very high performing in this and was not seeing growth that generally outperformed their region. What it suggests to us is what the literature tells us is that board member behavior and board behavior does have an impact on creating the conditions for student growth. And we certainly wouldn't expect you to, you know, take our word for it. We'd encourage you to read the literature for yourself and come to your own conclusion, which is why we included it, starting on pages 13, 14, and 15. You can see the various research that was relied upon to come to the conclusions and to develop the materials that we've shared with you over these past two days. You know, I have to take our opinion, read the source material yourself, and if you come up with different conclusions, let us know so that we can make edits. Spoiler alert, you're probably going to come to the same conclusions we come to when you actually read the literature that's out there. The reality is that there are behaviors that the board can engage in that do have a meaningful impact on creating the conditions for student success. And either boards choose to engage in those behaviors or they choose not to. But to your point, yeah, choosing to do so tends to accrue to the benefit of your students. But it's not comfortable. You try to you try to do the stuff in here, I'm sure some of you are already clever enough to realize, there's a lot of stuff in here that is moving your cheese and leaving people in the community and maybe even people in staff feeling like you've moved their cheese too. And so this is, we're not suggesting this is a comfortable path, this is an easy path. But what's suggested, it's a righteous path.
Because it's hard for me, and I'm not categorizing our district in this, but a district with the scenario that I just laid out, that by many accounts is very successful, yet if we use this, it doesn't appear as though the the board, from a governance perspective, it's hard to put light on that because by some measure, you may become a victim of your own success, right? Because we have been doing well by many accounts, then there wouldn't necessarily be as much incentive to be self-reflective as there are in those districts that are experiencing challenges or discord or controversy on the board.
Yeah, that's a danger school systems like yours face is that it's easy to become complacent. You know what? There's only, you know, 30, 40% of our students we're leaving behind. That's actually not bad. Hey, we're doing pretty good. That is unfortunately a very real reality that, you know, we run across districts all the time that are very comfortable with failing half of their children. It's like, well, we're only failing half, but, you know, the districts around us are failing, you know, three quarters, so we're actually great, unless it's your kids who are the other half. And so, yeah, I think that's something that the board has to wrestle with. You know, what is our level of satisfaction? And are we satisfied with where we are today, which has you certainly outperforming a lot of your peer urban districts across the country? And the question is, are you are you comfortable that this district is doing everything it can for the students you serve? If you are, then there is every reason to ignore everything that we have said here over these two days. If you are not comfortable with that, then it's time to buckle up and go to work.
It strikes me that a board would have to be careful not to become slavish to this formula, that our new board, new superintendent discreetly could go through this and then prioritize areas that seem to be most beneficial to the outcomes of our students.
You are a clever human.
Try to do it all at once.
So this is actually the next step in the process.
Yep.
So the next step in the process, you all have just now conducted essentially your first board self-evaluation with this instrument. Congratulations. Now you have an idea where you stand. Nowhere to go but up. The next step that happens is that if this is a path you want to continue, that Monica and I would reach back out, schedule time with, you know, all six of you, and talk through this, like, what are the items that you most want to pursue over the next 12-month period? We're not going to try to, you know, get it all done. We generally tell folks it's about a two-year process to go from, you know, good to great. But we'd want to visit with each of you individually. If this is what you want to do, then we'd work with you, write down what what is it that you want to accomplish? What are the different items? I heard some areas around policy, I heard some areas around goal setting, I heard some areas around community engagement. What are the items in here you want to get accomplished? And we will put all of that together and actually build a timeline that says, here's where we are today in October of 2020. Where can we be by December of 2021? And week by week by week, month by month by month, and we, you know, taking all of your input, identify what you want to prioritize, and we just put it on a timeline. And then we hand it back to you, and then you all would have to decide, yes, this is a timeline of things we want to work out, you know, and we want your, we want the two of you to support us in accomplishing it, in which case, that's what we would do. If that's not what you want, then, you know, we're also happy to help you find somebody else who can help you if we're not the right fit. But that is definitely the next step in this process. And I'll tell you upfront that we would highly prioritize the work around codifying roles, responsibilities, and board, expected board behaviors, because that has come up over and over and over these two days, that there's a lot of stuff that's expected, but that there's a lot of lack of clarity around what's expected. And so we'd interview each of you, you know, personally, we'd figure all that out, and we'd put it all on paper for you. We'd take the document that Baker has begun, and based on those interviews with everybody, we'd fill in the blanks, both, you know, with regards to some of what's in here, but as well as what you all share with us. We'd provide you a sample language for your upgraded handbook and provide all that back to you. That's, those are what the next steps look like if this is the path you all want to continue down. But that timeline would be aggressive. It's going to take a lot of work, it's going to take a lot of dedication, and it's going to take a lot of coaching. You know, part of what it takes to have this significant type of turnaround that we know from experience is it does require, you know, coaching support. Boards that try to go this path solo tend not to succeed. It's just, it's too hard of a shift. And so part of, you know, that timeline that we would give back to you would involve regular, in some cases, monthly one-on-one or one-on-two coaching to say, hey, yo, we watched your board meeting, and here's what we saw, you know, is distinct from what you share that you want. Let's talk about some ways that we can start to bridge the gap between current practice and desired practice. So that type of work, creating a clear timeline based on what you all want to prioritize, exactly as John described here, building that timeline out over the next 14 months and putting in place the coaching and the policy drafting support necessary to get you there, that's what we'll put in writing and give back to you, that you all will need to decide either we're going to commit to this or not. If you commit to it, our expectation is that you'll actually honor what's in there and do what you said you'll do by when you said you'll do it. There will be hard timelines, there will be specific due dates, and the expectation is that if you commit to it, then you get it done by when you say get it done. If you're not, if you know you're not going to follow through on your word, then please don't promise you're going to do something you're not going to do. We have a lot of other districts that are wanting us to support them. In fact, I'll be stepping out in half an hour to go help another one wrap up almost this exact same process. And our only request is only sign up to do this work if you're actually going to follow through, because because we would rather be spending our time with a board that is all the way in and is committed to do the work and hits its timelines than a board that's kind of iffy about it. And so if you're iffy, our coaching would be work with somebody who's not us. But if you're really confident this is the work you want and and you're ready to put things on paper and, you know, make the vision plain and make the processes and procedures plain, if you're ready for that journey over the next 14 months between now and December of 2021, this this is a this is a journey we would be honored to support you in. Questions about anything in this activity or what we just described as next steps from this activity? Questions, comments?
It's harder than I planned, isn't it?
Eh, than others.
Do you feel like you haven't done your homework?
No, I'm just saying there's going to be a lot of homework, that's all. So let me just check in, just to check for understanding. Can somebody tell me what you just heard me say the next steps are?
I heard you say the next step would be for us to decide as a group if this is how we want to proceed, and we really can't do anything until we make that decision.
I think the next step would be for us to study this and think about it in some depth, question ourselves, question this, prioritize what we think might be most useful. Of course, I'm not going to be around, so Doug, there you are.
Why didn't you just drop it in his lap? Anybody else? What did you hear me say the next steps?
I have a question, actually.
Yeah.
What what do you suggest and or recommend in terms of our timeline for making that decision and then following up on possible next steps?
All right, so let me repeat one more time for you with the next steps. This is why we always check for understanding. All right, so let me walk these next steps again. Our intention is to, for the two of us, to visit with the six of you individually and based on those conversations, to put together a timeline that says between now and December 2021, here is what this journey could look like based on what each of you individually tell us, and we bake all of that into a timeline. That timeline would include front-loading, significant upgrades to the board handbook that Jill's already begun, but that would have to include the things that you all have described and things in here, that would likely include quarterly self-evaluation, it would likely include, in some cases, monthly coaching calls, just to support you all making those changes. Once we get you that timeline, after we've had one-on-ones with you all again, two-on-ones with you all again, after we get you that timeline, you all would have to decide, is this something that we want to do? And what we are encouraging you is if you have any hesitancy, let us help you find someone else to work with. But if this is the path that you are absolutely committed to traveling, then we would be honored to support you on it. So let me check for understanding again. What did you hear me say are the recommended next steps?
I heard you say that you're going to chat with the six of us about what we
I heard you say that you're going to chat with the six of us about what we talked about and heard and come up with a timeline of what it could look like and front-loading, really specifically the policies and codifying how we are together first as a way to begin. Are we, if we're going to take this journey based on this handbook, this is what it looks like for the next year and year and a half. And that will include homework and time and commitment and coaching and a willingness to change our behavior and do what we say we mean or do what we say we think we want to do.
Yes, you, you heard correctly what I described as next steps. Questions or comments about those proposed next steps? So you'll eventually, you'll receive a document from us that says, here's what we have to offer. Take it or leave it. Question or comments about proposed next steps? Yeah?
I'm just thinking about the opportunity to process everything that's been talked about and thought about. So in addition to what you shared as the timeline, I'm just wondering about having an item on the board agenda that is both for the, either for the purpose of debriefing and/or just talking through the recommendations that you make. So I don't know the timing of that, if it's the next board meeting for continuing the conversation among the board, or if it's waiting until something comes back from you to then?
Yes, generally that happens in two ways. One, exactly as John described, you all are going to be doing your own kind of individual cogitation about all of this in advance of us reaching back out and visiting with you one-on-one. And then we will try to capture the benefit of that thoughtfulness that you've done individually. Then we'll develop a timeline for you and give it back to you, at which point you all will need to discuss that collectively, you know, preferably at a board meeting and say, is this the work that we want to do, yes or no? And, and then let us, and at that point, we'll, we'll just be sitting on the bench, waiting to hear back, you know, or not.
I think my encouragement to my colleagues on the board would be also reflect first on all the good things that you've done in the past. Maybe they haven't been codified, maybe they haven't been written down, but you have a lot of strengths and a lot of virtues.
That's right.
And if you reestablish those first, then it will make it easier to see what you want to add to it.
Yeah, definitely take an asset-based approach, definitely. Any other questions or reflections on, on this activity that Monica led us through?
Other than, I think it provides us an opportunity to, to do what we say and we know that we mean and that we care about and that this district has prided itself on. And the board has done in ways that don't look like this, but could certainly be enhanced in new ways to, as we move forward, as I keep saying over and over again, in 2020, new leadership, new board, remaking education in general post-pandemic, that this gives us an opportunity to be really thoughtful and clear in what our expectations are so that we can deliver what we say we want for kids in this community. And that is that, you know, intellectual, you know, supporting the intellectual progress of every student every day. Like, what does that really look like in 2020? And this gives us a tool to have a conversation that is measurable and not just because I know it because I feel it. And so I appreciate things that help me measure it and present it to the public. So I, I'm excited about the work. I'm a little, you're going to call us on our stuff, and I know that, and, and that won't be easy. But I think it is for, he's smiling, the benefit of, of our students. I want to be a better board member that supports a district that helps the kids in every part of the city succeed, including the ones that I physically represent. But I'm all for tools that help us do that efficiently and effectively and, and help our new superintendent do it well and not live it 20 hours a day because everything falls on her. So I want to do it to be of support to the new leadership moving forward for the next generation.
Yeah, I didn't co-sign on this earlier, I should have. There is a strong body of literature that heavily speaks to a correlation between superintendent longevity and student growth. And so your students have been the beneficiary of superintendent longevity in Long Beach that is unlike superintendent longevity really in any other large urban district nationwide. And I would tend to agree, if passed as prologue, that to the extent that you can create a team dynamic that sets Jill up for success for at least 10 years, we could try to beat the boys, see if we can get to 20, that, that longevity will in fact accrue to the benefit of your students. So I know that was mentioned earlier, but neither of us commented on it, and I just wanted to clarify, there does appear to be evidence to support that in the literature.
Well, something I learned from our wonderful legal counsel, and I know that you were extolling his virtues earlier, but at one point Brent advised us as a board that we develop framework and behaviors that are appropriate for a benevolent board as well as an adversarial board. And we've been very fortunate in having a benevolent, I can't say that word. I said it once correctly earlier, I can't say it again. We've been very fortunate in that respect, and, and we have had a couple of blips along the way. But to me, it makes sense to have that framework in place so that no matter who sits in our seats, we'll have success. And when you tell us about the correlation between student success and the way the board functions and what we do, I'd, I'd be hard pressed not to go along with it because that's what we want. We, we want the best for all of our students. And if you're saying, here's a, here's a recipe for that, for that outcome, here's a recipe for how you can directly affect student outcomes. And the work, well, the, the framework is available for us. We have to put in the time and the effort, but the framework is available for us, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just have to make the commitment to do that. And I, I feel like that's our decision going forward is knowing there will be work that needs to be done, but also knowing that it will be very well worth the effort. So thank you.
And may I say thank you to both of you as well. The bad news is I'm out of time to compensate for any malfeasance as I may have committed. The good news is for Megan and Diana and Juan and Doug, the world is their oyster.
So let's go ahead and take a quick break. We use this time also to transition into a closed session. So how much time do you all need? Five, 10, 15 minutes? Five?
A closed session won't be long.
Yeah, our closed session will not take a long time. So a five-minute break? Yes? All right.